Why the United States of America to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible to be just.
Okay, do I have a motion consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Let's second it.
It's my move and second it to approve the June tenth twenty twenty four Board of Education consent agendas. Are there any further discussions?
But.
Yes.
Apple.
Yes.
Bose.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Stuville, yes. Goodman, yes. Motion passed.
Okay, patron input. Okay, four point O discussion, four point one, teaching and learning.
Um, had a new topic come my way and it's obviously just for discussion. Uh, this is created. Um, wanted to discuss uh, this Happy Bear program and oh, there she is at the microphone. Uh, so a lot of school districts uh use this and it would have been in the packet, but uh, that's no nothing. Janelle did wrong, but I just got it after the packet went out. And so after I got it, I said, well, do you think we could discuss it quickly tonight? So it's just more of an overview. Ask questions. Janelle can visit with you on why she's thinking it'd be a good program for Rockville. A lot of area schools do use it, including Weah uh and most of the Johnson uh and Paola. So Paola, Weah. And you see Johnson and Wyandotte County Schools that use it. Janelle's uh former district Blue Valley uses it as well. So uh, this is the website uh and she talks. Jenny can go through it as well. So take it away, Ms. Crater.
Um, so I'm interested in bringing the Happy Bear program to Rockville Elementary as a program that helps um focus on kids staying safe. And that is through uh teaching them about um, sorry, I'm gonna go through my notes here. Um. It's gonna be through a school assembly format, a sunflower staff member comes and then they have a mascot, not somebody who dresses up as Happy Bear. Um, it's a uh play that's research based and has been available for schools for over thirty years. Um, and it's a vital part of the comprehensive safety skills we teach our children. So um, welcome touch or unwelcome touch could be as simple as, you know, a high five is something that makes us feel good. So that is a welcome touch. If a kiddo pushes us, that would be considered an unwelcome touch. It's about personal space. It is also about um keeping private areas private as well. Um, but it's just a great way to introduce this to kids and help them learn how to be safe in an easy format for kids. Now, part of that would be that to present this, we would have a parental consent form and we would ensure that all kids could either opt in or opt out and it would be up to them. And they would just do something alternative if the parents didn't know. And there's uh information that goes out from Sunflower House to help parents know what it looks like. I watched two videos online today and it just showed exactly what it looks like. So it's a nice program, something that uh our social worker also thought would be valuable for our kids.
As Lisa used it at Paola when she was over there.
Yes.
And I guess, I mean, Jim and Jo Erin and Rob having kids that uh that we uh don't.
Yeah, I mean, my.
I don't think they had it when my kids were there, but probably.
Acton, I mean, she's a sophomore, so she had it when she was at Weah and she, I I still remember her talking about it and even Evan in preschool, because they talk about the no-no square. And then, I mean, like he will talk about that. I mean, so I mean, it's definitely something that that resonates with kids.
I think it's just a great way to keep our kids safe and that's a a large part of education, right, is to help our kids be able to advocate for themselves. And so um, I just think it's a valuable lesson to teach kids at an early age.
Are the videos you mentioned on here, so they go, is like, is it on a menu or where?
No, I actually went, actually, I think they are. If you go down, um, if you stay kind of on Happy Bear and you go down there, um, further down on the right. I think you have to stay where it says Happy Bear.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's a venue. If you search um in the menu for Happy Bear, it's kind of recommended pre-K through first, um, but for us to begin it, we would start um pre-K through second and then, or K through second, we haven't talked pre-K, but K through second and then in following years, we would just have our kindergarteners really really. So yeah, if you hit.
I think at Weah, they do it every year.
Do they do it for for pre-K through second though?
I honestly, I think they probably do.
And if you'll scroll down, keep going, right there. So there's two parent videos. There's a parent video one and a parent video two, which actually shows them what the presentation looks like. So it's nice for parents to actually see what's being taught and how it's being taught.
Like I said, just I've thought something new, especially with, you know, with a topic like this that, I mean, obviously, as you see at the top, I mean, child abuse and keeping kids safe. We all don't want that to happen, but uh, to make sure the board's aware of it. So you guys can um preview it and then we can discuss it again in July or even August board meeting. So there's no hurry, but uh just wanted to make sure the board had some uh preview of it before we did implement.
Thank you for considering it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next is uh, uh, Dave is gonna come up and with preliminary assessment data. Uh, so it is all preliminary. Uh, the packet he gave you, so it says the top Rodmore Elementary State Assessment uh results. And uh, so and then there's actually three items in here. He'll talk about the preliminary state assessment results. Uh, then also in here, the chronic absenteeism rate. And then finally is what uh the building's put together for me. It's uh called an assessment dashboard, so it's more on our local assessments. So when you hear fast, fast bridge and things like that. But all this is gonna be very important as we get into uh the needs assessment. So uh, as we start talking about that four point three tonight, uh, we referenced all three of these last year in the building needs assessments. So for state assessments to local assessments to uh absenteeism. And so I thought it was important that uh we get this in front of you as we start reviewing last year's needs assessment and and starting to create this year's needs assessment. So Dave, show us or go walk us through preliminary results for state assessment.
All right. Well, thank you uh for allowing me to go over this year's state assessment results. Uh, we'll start with Rodmore Elementary. We do are fortunate that all of our building principals are here as well this evening. If if you have any questions for for them or or myself. But as we started reviewing results, as Dr. Bierman said, these are preliminary results. So you may see a fifty-three percent, a fifty-four percent. There may be some slight adjustments as the state has not quote unquote vetted these scores yet. We have some students that we complete uh paperwork. If their parents want to opt them out of a test, if we have a parent or a student who has an extended absence, we will turn in some forms to the state. Those things have not been finalized. So right now, these are preliminary results. They usually become final uh in October or September when the State Board of Education uh sees the results and then they they vet them. But just as a reminder.
Dave, real quick question. So again, if say a parent does opt their kid out, so in the preliminary results, does that kind of give to them?
As we've dug into the data, the student scores of those that did not take the test because their parents opted them out were scored as a one on the state assessment. And those scores may stay on there. And so that's what we need to wait for to go through. We have other students that um their scores would not count. If, for example, they had an extended illness, um, we've had one student who had a bone marrow transplant and was not in school. And so we turned um, we opted her out and with the family's blessing because they weren't in school. So different situations like that, we can, um, but the state has about thirty different classifications, you know, for example, of a student, middle school or high school student may be incarcerated. Obviously, they can't take the test, but they're in our system, so we have to fill out paperwork for those type of students. So a wide variety of reasons why a student may or may not take the test. As you guys are familiar, the state assessment is scored on a four-point scale with one being below grade level, two, having a basic understanding of the material at that grade level. The student scores are three on the state assessment. That shows that they have an effective understanding of the content at their grade level. And if the student scores are four, they have an excellent understanding of the content at their at their grade level. Uh, the results that you see in front of you are the percentage of students that scored a three or four on the state assessment uh with the preliminary results. So as we go through through just real quickly with Broadmoor's results, you'll see that we're stable at the fourth and fifth grade level in all three air or in all two, in both the areas. Especially over the last three or four years, scores ranging from sixty-four percent up to seventy percent. For example, in grade four math, this year, our fourth grade students scored a sixty-eight. You'll see a little bit of an increase with our English scores with the fourth graders from a fifty-eight to a sixty-two and then just off a percentage or two in grade five. We did see a little bit of a dip with our third grade uh students and we recognize that and that's an area that we're now gonna dig in a little bit deeper and investigate as to why there there was a dip in the student scores from the year before. So when you look at those third grade scores and you may see a sixty-three percent in English this in the year before, this year's group of third grade students scored a fifty-two. It's a totally different group of students. And although we recognize that, we do wanna look at what we're doing year in and year out. Because over time, as you start looking at trends, whether they're going up or going down, although you have different students, you do have often the same teachers using the same curriculum. They may be teaching different uh different lessons, approaching it from a different standpoint, but we are looking at our systems as we look at scores over time. And so I know that Dr. Bierman, myself, Mrs. Apple, we've had some conversations about all grade levels and what we can do to continue to look at improvement. When we look at our middle school store.
You know, and obviously, no one's gonna take more pride in their building than Mrs. Apple. And so she's already looking at that. And so as we've looked at, so then we can break it down by uh, you know, ones, twos, threes and fours. And so just big picture. So in twenty-two, twenty-three, with those high results at eighty and sixty-three, there were eleven kids that scored uh in one. This year, we actually still had eleven. Where we saw some regression was we had some threes go to twos. Four's about stayed the same year to year, one stayed. But like where in twenty-two, twenty-three, we maybe had twenty-nine kiddos in level three, uh, and twenty-one in level two, it flip flops. So now we have twenty-nine roughly or thirty in level two and about twenty-one or so in level three. Um, and it actually breaks it down. So you know, definitely there has to be that cutoff, like a three hundred is what you get to a level three, but we might have had some kids at a two ninety-nine, two ninety-eight. So you can get like that close. It's almost like a gas gauge on your car, uh, where we see that fact and we had a little parent teacher conference with his own child and so he could see those the uh gauges on there uh as well. But most of the the ones, um, you know, they uh obviously have uh continued to to struggle in some areas. Most are identified in special education or are an E S L student. And so um, it is tricky to, because obviously, it's their first year they're taking that, so we can't do the state assessments at second grade. There is at second grade, we can do uh a state assessment, like a formative assessment. Uh, we've never done that. We talked about that this morning, that admin, maybe uh Janelle works with her second grade teachers and just so the second grade teachers going to third grade can even have a, you know, an idea of what a state assessment looks like. Uh, it won't be reported on here, but it might help uh them kind of look through there. So, but Miss Apple, you want to say anything else on third grade design?
No, I mean, we do the interims. Um, I don't want to make excuses and say, oh, it's this or it's that or, you know, it's our new curriculum resource or anything like that. I think um having scores in the eighties is kind of anomaly. And um, that's why, you know, last year I was glad when we said we wanted to stay at about fifty percent uh and not keep me at eighty percent. Because I don't know that that is something that can sustain year to year to year because it is, there are a lot of variables when it comes to the kids. Um, we will be focusing, I mean, our teachers work very hard every single week to look at the students and to intervene as needed. We will be looking closely at the kiddos who scored a two and seeing what we need to do for them to get them up to that three um or four this year.
And remember, and as Dave read the definitions, two can be interpreted at grade level. So, but two's, you know, not counted on this. So if those eleven kids out of the class, so at grade level, we'd be in the nineties.
Yeah, eighty-nine percent maybe. Um, I have the numbers. Um, it would maybe be eighty-nine percent and ninety-two percent of third grade for E L A and and math if we were to include our at grade level.
And we're having conversations with the school districts to see if, you know, was it just the Bluesburg third grade students or was this a trend that we saw across the state? And just in some early conversations with at least two other school districts, they saw a little bit of dip with their third grade scores as well. And as the scores get vetted in in the fall, the comparison that we do in the past, we'll do that again. And and again, we'll continue to investigate and and see what we need to do to continue to improve our practice. The middle school results on the next page. Um, we recognize there is a really nice jump in our math scores at all three grade levels. And so the students definitely need and the teachers need to be recognized that in in the fourth grade from the previous year, there was a four percent jump. In the seventh grade math students, there was a five percent jump from the year before. And then the eighth graders, there was a seven percent jump. So very nice things going on in math. As Ms. Apple alluded to, when we start looking at our resources, we're using big ideas as our core resource for grades K through twelve now. So it's something that may be working at that grade level, something we may dig deeper into at at the elementary level. But math scores score very well. If you're looking over at your English seventh grade scores from the year prior, we see an eight percent increase from the year prior. And our science scores also went up five percent. So kudos to the middle school on a lot of nice work. Um, an area that we do need to dig into a little bit is probably with our eighth grade E L A scores. And as you can see, there there's a four-year, um, four, four or five years actually worth of data there, but from twenty-twenty-one um to current, there's a little bit of a slide. And we need to investigate that and have conversations and and Ms. Hankins, Mr. Fontensteal and the staff will definitely do that. And so there's just areas that we need to be honest. We can look at and see what we can do better, whether it's more focus on the interims, more focus on our standards, increasing the rigor in which we teach and hold our students accountable to. And so those are some things that we will be looking at at the middle school.
But definitely, I mean, the highlight is math. Uh, I mean, we've had conversations at the board level regarding middle school math. And so I I think we all agree that's a nice highlight to see. You know, while we're having this case and uh we've had a lot of staff turnover there. And so that that was refreshing to see. Uh, we appreciate the work, uh, what's going on there for free. Just hired a new seventh grade math teacher and so getting that that new teacher involved uh and uh up to our expectations and everything. Ms. Hankins and Mr. Fontenstill will work with her on that as well.
What time of year are the tests given?
These tests are usually given sometime after spring break. Uh, this year, they had to teach the teachers and the administration had a choice between roughly after spring break till about the middle of April to take the tests. And so interims are held three times prior to that. At least that has been the the case up till this year. There's gonna be some changes next year, but it's not done all the way at the end of the year, but it is done late in spring.
K S D gives districts testing window. So you can choose that roughly six weeks or a month, yeah, five or six weeks or so. But it's always been now, well, a couple of years ago, actually, there was a few weeks before spring break. And now spring break is a week later next year, but you, Dave has to go always to a state assessment conference in Wichita in October, I think. And then uh at at that meeting, he's told that all those things, this is the testing window and test security and all that. But it's usually at March into April.
Yeah. So I think this year, principals would agree, we took the test for the most part in April, late March, and then we leave ourselves a week before the deadline for makeups and and those type of student things. Cause you do have to hit a certain percentage of your students that take the test for your scores to be to count. And so we were able to get all of our students that signed up to take the test that did not opt out, took the test.
Okay.
And virtual kids as well. And obviously, Dave leads and helps lead that program. They are required in these different grades to take the state, the state assessments as well.
Right.
So they're proctored and uh, and so our virtual kids, whether full-time or blended, are in these numbers as well.
Right. And that's why these are district results. So we have four or five students that may be sophomores. These are district results. So the virtual students are in here with our high students as well.
Taking a look at the next page, our high school uh preliminary results. Uh, very stable in math over the last three years from thirty-three percent, thirty-four percent, and again, thirty-four percent. And then a little bit of a jump over the last three years in our E L A scores from forty-three to forty-nine. And then this year's class scored fifty-two percent of our students scored a three or a four on the state assessment. And again, as our administrators and teachers look at the data, they're gonna look at how many students scored a one, how many students scored a two, a three and a four, and then work with those students and provide services as best they can. And when we talk about tiered supports, it's a lot easier at the elementary level than it is at the secondary level. But we do work with our special ed department. We work with other resources uh with our teacher aides, providing services for many of students as as we can. As you see, we've got science scores as well, uh stabilized again, forty-three percent compared to the year before. And then the last set of numbers, that's our district and state or district averages with all of our students that took the test. And in math, again, these are preliminary results. You may see some slight adjustments. I think in our math, we're gonna score very similar to where we did last year as a school district. And you might see a little bit of a dip from fifty-three to fifty-two percent uh overall in our E L A, but a nice jump in our science. We should see a nice jump overall um in our district science results.
And then like the most, I mean, English, that the oh, obviously, that's the highest score the high schools ever had. And it's almost twice as high as the state average. So, I mean, I think that's definitely a shiny star right there to point out. So kudos to our high school E L A department. That's uh, that's a good score uh when you're trying to have sophomores take tests that they might feel like they are meaningless to them. And there's some back to them, that's true, but to the district and accreditation and our needs assessment. So that's a struggle is uh how to motivate kids uh at that level that they know they're not getting a college scholarship or it matters with the military or world of work. Uh, so uh, we've done a nice job trying to motivate our kids to do that with incentives and and other things.
We do anticipate some changes next year with the state assessment. You may have read that through some different uh articles throughout the state. But next year, we will have new assessments in the E L A and in math. Uh, there will be new cut scores. Those have not been determined. Um, in conversations and debate, those cut scores will be determined a lot earlier than they originally said they would be. So the state uh department has some work to do. Uh, as mentioned before, the interims, currently, our students would take three interim practice tests, if you will, prior to their test. Next year, they're gonna do two tests instead. But the goal from the state is those tests are gonna be more aligned with a pacing guide that they recommend that our teachers and students follow throughout the year. And so there'll be a little bit of a learning curve next year, but I think the state's moving in the right direction with providing as many resources as possible for our teachers to make sure they're teaching the right uh standards at the right time.
By cut scores, you're talking about the cutoff between, say, two and three?
Yes, from with the new results, they've yet to determine until they come out, what's the cut score for a four, what's the cut score for a three and so on. And from my understanding, they originally said that they were, those cut scores were gonna be determined later on. And I think there was some uh conversations about doing it much sooner than that. That way, we would get the results.
Is the assessment itself gonna be consistent with what we've been doing or is it gonna be?
I think the format will be the same, but I think it will look a little bit different with regards to what areas will be focused on. And we've yet to kind of see that from the state is how much of it's gonna be focused on certain standards across the board at each grade level. So we're still waiting for some more information from the state, but our, I know our administrators and myself will will stay on top of it and be prepared and and then make sure we share our information with our teachers. So as they start their professional learning community conversations at each grade level or within each department at the middle school and high school, they understand what they're teaching and when they need to teach it. And most importantly, what level of rigor do they need to teach it at? And if you remember, in years past, I've shown you some state assessments. Um, it's a lot different than it used to be. Uh, there's a lot more critical analysis that students need to do. They need to think uh a little more um in depth than they have in the past. They need to think a little more in-depth than they have in the past because the questions make them do that. And so that means we need to teach just not towards the state assessment, but in everything we do, in all of our content areas at a higher level, holding our students more accountable for their learning.
And the next page is really positive, but that's our chronic absenteeism rate. So as a reminder how that's reported, the definition of chronic absenteeism is that a student misses ten percent or more of the student year. So to put that in numbers, we roughly have one hundred and seventy-five student days. So seventeen point five days or more. Lisa Reese back there, kindergarten, just look what growth we've made for those kindergartners. Two years ago, almost thirty-one percent of the kindergarteners decided to take, you know, have more days of chronic absenteeism than, I mean, they should have been here. Last year, twenty-two point four, ten point one. So just kindergarten level, but all the way down, huge gains. It's on, and we'll review our needs assessment. It's on all buildings' needs assessments. It was a focus by staff, it was a focus by our administrators, our students, our parents. And there's not one building on, one building or one grade that didn't have sizable increases. Obviously, we still have senioritis and honestly, we have a little eighth gradeitis, it looks like. And that's been historic, so it's just not recently. But I don't know where the eighth graders are interested in going because they still have four years left. But, but we still, you know, it was twenty-three point two, it was thirty-four point seven, twenty-three point two, sixteen point nine. So we are making gains even in eighth grade. But, you know, anytime you look at data, it's kind of interesting. Guys had already kind of seen that one as well. So, but many, you know, went down big time.
Well, we're two-year period, a lot of them were cut in half.
Yes, so just kudos to everyone. So, and at the bottom or the top of the chart or the bottom is our district one. So we went from twenty point eight to eighteen point two to ten point eight. So this will be populated on our building report cards, our district report as well. So that will be really good information. And we're not finished. I mean, we still want ten point eight percent of our kiddos to be missing seventeen, eighteen, twenty days a year. It's a struggle, whether you're teaching kindergarten or high school chemistry, to get those kids caught up, so.
What was the state percentage last year?
It was up towards twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
They saw a little bit. And these are preliminary results, but their results have gone down as well. And it's an emphasis across the state, it really is. But as wise mentor of mine once said, there's consequences for everything that you do. And I need to give a shout out to all of our administrators because not only are they holding students accountable, but they're also creating incentives for our students to come to school. And from being exempt from a final at the high school to other awards and kudos or shout outs in announcements and those type of things, it's just a huge emphasis that we've made as a district. And as parents, if you've seen the Sunday messages, you've read a lot from each one of the administrators at all grade levels and all buildings about the importance to come to school. And so it's just kind of a shout out to the entire community, but especially our administrators for holding our students accountable, but also giving them rewards for doing the right thing. And sometimes just a pat on the back or being exempt from a final makes a huge difference, so.
And these are great improvements, and I know they've reached out so much to the parents. More so this year and that apparently is helping a lot too to encourage them to get their kids to school, so.
It's just good communication and Mr. Pickman, Mr. Fontenstiel, Dr. Van Reed, Ms. Hankins at the secondary level. Those are some, sometimes some hard conversations. And at the same time, probably the elementary level, because it's really not the students at the lower levels that can't get themselves to school.
Right.
Sometimes it's the parents. And so kudos to having good conversations with families about the importance of making school a priority.
And then the last document Dave put in there, this is, since I started here, I created what's called a district assessment dashboard. So it just allows me at my level to, three times a year, see where we're at with our, you've heard of FastBridge, it's our local assessment. So it's kind of like our dipstick, check in the car's oil three times a year. You can see Dave and his crew out here, the different concepts that they're tested on at preschool and kindergarten, first grade, second, all the way up to, we even still assess some assessments at the senior level, not as many as well. Now, why you see some grays and not, well, first, like if you see on that first page, NAs at preschool, there are certain tests that are given at certain times and others aren't. So it's not like we skipped them, it's just we don't do certain tests at certain times of the year. If it's gray, it's mean it's either below eighty percent or it was above eight. So maybe it was eighty-three percent and it went down to eighty-one percent. So even though it's still above eighty, it went down. And so it's just a cause that we can pause, reflect on that. There always has to be, and I was telling the principals today, whether it's state assessment, chronic absenteeism or this, we have to be able to tell the story, good, bad and indifferent. There has to be, I mean, these are our kids that are reflected on this data. And we have to be able to accurately discuss the story behind that. So eighty percent, as we've done a lot of work with the state department and you've heard us say over and over, the acronym MTSS, Multi-Tiered Systems of Support. Through research, they tell us that eighty percent in any of these is the school district's goal. If you're under, if you're chronically under eighty percent, there's potentially a concern. It could be a wide range. You have to find out what that is. Is it instruction? Is it curriculum? Is it staffing? Is it a student cohort group that is really struggling? So it's never just a finger pointing to the teachers. It's never a finger pointing to, oh, our core curriculum. It's then part of our job as practitioners and professionals to figure out, you know, potentially why that case is. I really had Dave bring this to you because as we get to the needs assessment, there's no state assessments for Circle Grove and Rockville. So you have that information in front of you. You know, last year, we set these score cuts like at forty-five percent or fifty percent, and we'll go through that. And so you'll be able to have that information in front of you as well when we begin looking at the needs assessment and our goals for assessments for those as well. But it's natural then, as you go through this purple document, that if we're doing what we set out to do and we get to the high school level and these kids are getting ready to go to the world of work or the military or to college, we should see eighties and nineties, and you see that. So that's just the continued growth. And you can see eleventh grade reading, they scored at a ninety percent. So that means ninety percent of the juniors are at grade level or above in that math assessment. So we're tracking them the right way. Sabers is an optional test that parents and students can opt out of. And so the Sabers results you see there, the kids didn't take that assessment. That is teachers' assessments on how many, what percentage of kids. So like in kindergarten, kindergarten teachers did that assessment on all the kindergarteners and feel like ninety-five percent. It's more of a social, emotional assessment that we feel like these kids are at grade level in that topic as well, so. We'll definitely hang on to this. We continue to start tonight and continue to work on the needs assessment and then as it's become final. As far as comparing us to other schools, that, Dave will not be able to provide that information till the latest October. And then once we have that, we can see how we're doing compared to our friends across the state of Kansas as well. Thank you.
I wanted to clarify, I was sent a text by my wife. My children did have the happy bear, so it's been going on a bit.
You don't have to do the happy dance. Everyone that's watching and us would like to see Jim, but do the happy dance.
All right, four point three, twenty twenty-four. Oh, I'm sorry, four point two RES and DES twenty-four, twenty-five schedule.
Okay, Ms. Crater, Ms. Apple, come up. So they've been working on a new schedule. It does involve some block, it does involve changing their specials, which also includes physical activity. And I know it's been the board's wishes to make sure that our kids are very active in the day, they don't lose physical activity. So before this goes into motion, once again, it's just a discussion item. So no one's acting on this tonight, but I want Mrs. Crater and Mrs. Apple to share their schedules. So you have those in the packet, but just you can open that. We'll go with you.
The proposed?
Yeah.
Yeah, start with proposed, please. So this doesn't necessarily highlight, but this is just a way for us to look at the schedule as a whole. I would like to propose that we move our specials to an eighty-minute block. Be broken into two specials at a time, both forty minutes for continuity. And it's going to help as our kids get ready to transition to Broadmore. It's going to give our kids more time in art and STEM and in PE to have, go through standards and have more time for kids to actually work. When I was doing my observations in both art and in STEM, there's very little time. You have a thirty-minute block, a five-minute transition, and then like ten minutes to kind of go over what it is, discuss the concepts, and then kids are only given about ten minutes to actually dig in. And so a forty-minute blocker, it's going to give them much more time for them to dig in. So I'm really excited about that. It gives us the continuity of that every single day, Monday through Friday, they are going to go to the specials at the same time. The way that we have it now is that they're broken into three thirty-minute blocks, but they don't do that every day. There's two days a week where they only go to two of those thirty-minute blocks. I think the biggest change as well is it gives our teachers a common plan time. So that gives the whole grade level the opportunity to meet and work together. So, and this just breaks it out, that you can see across the board that we have equity. So every, every grade has the same minutes for specials for target time. We're really prioritizing a core, a tier-one teaching time for ELA at ninety minutes. They're going to have their target time, so thirty minutes for math, thirty minutes for reading. Then we have sixty minutes for math recess. Also, our blocks are less chopped up, so they're going to have more time to have a complete block and not have those breaks. If you would go to the, you can kind of, that's just a way for us, me to look at it. The best thing about this as well, in comparison to the way that our schedule ran this past year, is that I'm proposing that we'll have two recesses, two fifteen-minute recesses, one in the morning before lunch, one in the afternoon. And the way that this past year, almost, oh, I'm sorry, all of our grade levels had their recesses in the afternoon. So they worked a lot of times, almost the whole day before they had that break. So the way that we're looking at it now is every single grade level will have a recess in the morning. Every single grade level will have a recess in the afternoon. So we're really taking that cognitive load off of them for a little bit to help them be ready to learn.
Yeah, go to where it breaks down as far as the minutes.
If you'll look at the current schedule versus the proposed.
Currently, they're all doing recess in the afternoon. How long is that?
It's twenty-five minutes.
So you're adding five minutes of recess.
Just separating it out as well. If you'll do this, this one, where it has the current and proposed. Thank you. So I'm proposing this, a six-day block, the way that Broadmore does it. And what we did is we wanted to compare our minutes that kids are active to the six days. If we looked at six days at our current schedule to six days to the proposed. And so we really are looking at a lot of active minutes. So they would go to PE four times for forty minutes at a time versus the six times, if you're looking at the six days, for thirty minutes. We really are staying more active with this schedule. I think part of it has to do with, a lot of it has to do with the extra recess. And, and we did include music as well because music is a time for kids to be active. They don't sit and sing, especially in my building, they're up doing games so that they're active, they're dancing. But, so three hundred and fifty versus four hundred and twenty. And we threw in a brain break, a guaranteed brain break. But I'll tell you that our teachers use a brain break whenever the kids need it. They know, they're professionals, they know when their kids need to stop, get up, move, so that they can be more focused when they come back. And even if you took the brain breaks out, we would still be over our total active minutes for our current schedule.
And next part, so your four teachers gain ten minutes more instructional time a day because of this. Is that what, that's, you have two sixty now and now you have two seventy?
Two seventy. And we're able to, we are restructuring the MTSS, our intervention minutes. Instead of having a breakout for math and a breakout for ELA, we have one hour thirty and thirty, which is very targeted, which is what MTSS has recommended. And so, yeah, I'm, I'm real, I love that we're going to have about thirty extra minutes in our day for a science and social studies block. We'll implement that through kind of the lens of reading under ELA as well, but it's just an additional time.
So currently, you're having P every day, right? And you'd be going to four out of six then?
Yes.
But you're increasing the recess. And are you increasing the minutes on the PE?
Yes.
From?
From thirty to forty.
Now, it says twenty-five, thirty-five, but you're.
We're taking off the transition time. We want to compare apples to apples. It needs to be fair.
So right now, it's thirty, but really it's twenty-five minutes of the time they get going. So if you schedule forty, by the time they get going, it'll be thirty-five.
So it's ten less minutes for PE though.
Correct, yes. But the nice thing is then we're gaining a little bit more construct, you kind of get that instructional time and we still have them. It's important to look at the whole child and then being active is an important part of their learning.
I do like the two recesses. I mean, I think it's great to have one in the morning and one in the afternoon because you're. Absolutely.
Probably they did the morning and the afternoon, so.
And we did check with the state, of course, on minutes. So remember the one thousand one hundred and sixteen hours, we have to make sure every kiddo except seniors have. If you look in the handbook and you know, also checked with the state, visited with Jenny and who helps with all that, you can do the one twenty-five or you can do two fifteens. As long as it's not before or after lunch, none of ours will be. So if you have PE or recess then lunch or lunch and then recess, you can't count that. So none of them will be right before or right after lunch as well. So this is kosher with the state on counting our minutes as well. We're not losing any time by adding more time to recess.
How does staff feel about it?
Overall, I think they're pretty pleased with it. I think they're excited for, we're really looking forward to targeted intervention. We started that in kindergarten with our ELA interventions the second semester. I know that they are extremely excited about having a common plan time. It's considering that two days a week, you don't have a thirty-minute block of your plan, they might need to talk and not have the ability to talk to everyone at the same time. So I think that's pretty important. I also think that the schedule, just a lot, when we have our target time, is that a better time in the day as well for all of our grade levels. So there's a lot of positives to the schedule.
What are, what are the negatives that you're hearing from staff?
Um, I, I think the biggest thing is we like the PE every day. It's just hard to put it into the schedule to where everyone can go. So increasing still keeps them active. I don't really hear a lot of negatives. I think the hardest thing is we do have to have one grade level that has their target intervention time earlier in the day. And really, when our kids are freshest is when they do their best learning. But it's not a bad thing to have what you need, what you need to work on as first. So, but they also feel like that's, they kind of like that time to teach and then intervene. So we do have, first grade will intervene pretty quickly in the morning. Second grade, their intervention time this year was at the very end of the day for ELA, which they were not happy about, and I was able to move that up quite a bit. So those were kind of the positives, so. So it is hard to give up. So when you have a morning special, that's harder because that's when our kids do the best learning. And then just that intervention time. So we're going to look at how do we make it equitable from year to year as well.
Do you know of anyone else that is doing this?
Um, well. Yeah, Cindy does this. There are not any other school districts that I know of that do PE every day. And you all would be floored if I told you that at my last school, that they have recess once every six days.
No, not recess.
Have PE, sorry, not, yeah, we had recess. Yeah, we had, we had recess every day, but we only had PE once in a six-day rotation. So it's, it, it's not guaranteed, I think, for a lot of schools. So we're still looking at how we get that in because we feel. it, it's not guaranteed, I think, for a lot of schools, so we're still looking at how we get that in because we feel.
Gonna make sure that it's, that it's worthwhile. It's hard when you have fifty students in a, in a PE class, so making sure that we have, we're using our time wisely.
This will be, I think, better as well, um, our PE teacher was seeing three hundred and sixty-five kids every single day. Um, so it, it's just kind of like a nonstop revolving door for her. Um, so this way she'll have those targeted times, it'll be a little bit longer where she can give the concepts, the teaching, and then they have more time to practice those skills with that little bit of a longer time. So, but I do think it's a great transition to get, um, I really want Rockville to be aligned with Broadmore, so that transition is really smooth.
How many, is it two classes that are in a PE?
Yes, and we will continue to have, have two classes, that's the only place where we're doubled up. So our musics will not be doubled, um, STEM's not doubled, arts not doubled.
And libraries.
And libraries not as well.
So Cindy, why don't you share yours and say for calculating?
Nothing's really um changed too much. We are moving to eighty-minute block. Um, and so third and fourth grade will be, oh, there we go. So third and fourth, um, will have eighty minutes of um their special block. We are taking out computers and keyboarding at third and fourth grade. Um, mainly because the STEM and the art teachers have asked to have the kids for the entire eighty minutes. Um, or at least just the longer bit. So we're kind of looking at maybe doing a little bit of a recess on the backside um of those two classes for more movement, but they just needed those kids for a longer time. The previous teachers were like, sixty minutes is too long, we'd like to have it cut down. So these teachers are like, no, by the time, kind of like what you said, by the time we get in there and then you give the instruction and then they get up and start moving around and doing their activities, it's time to clean up and go. And so um, moving, moving that back to full blocks. Fifth grade, um, will have a full block of PE instead of the thirty-minute block. Um, they will be doubled up, but they will have um the full, uh, fifth grade will be different, it will be fifty minutes. So they'll have a full fifty minutes of PE. Um, we were able to work with middle school and high school um to get music and band at the same time. So um, Mr. Um, T works with the band in um groups. So like he might have like percussion and um on one day and horns on another day or something like that. And so we were able to um coordinate his schedule and Mrs. Moore's schedule to, like, if a student like music and band will be at the exact same time. So if your student is a percussion student, he will go to band while everybody else is in music. If they are a horn student, then they will be in band while everybody else is in music. So we'll just kind of flip flop. The only day that that doesn't work is on Wednesdays because due to the schedule, Mrs. Moore can't come over for music, and those are the days that he will have um full band. And anybody that does not take band will have music, will have an aide cover that, that thirty minutes um on that day.
But that's, I mean, always been a little bit of a burr or a little struggle, I guess, for uh the fifth grade teachers at Broadmore because you know, it's an elective, so say out of a class of a hundred and twenty, eighty or ninety used to take Mr. C or now Mr. T's band. Well, if you talk to the fifth grade teachers, it was, what do you do with thirty kids? Um, and so now, that's now their planned time, all fifth grade teachers, because they'll either be with Allison or Zeb during that time, so. Uh, in fact, we've discussed even here, or I think even when Mr. C retired, like, I mean, a lot of districts don't start band in fifth grade, it's been a tradition in Lewisburg, and so um in fact, I did research when Mr. C retired, like, do we continue it? I think the only like league school that does fifth grade band is Shondora, and it's actually an after-school uh program, it's not in the schedule. Uh, and so um, probably another reason we have a really good band program, we started early. Uh, and so, and Allison and Zeb were fully supportive of this uh as well.
Yeah, I was worried about the music, we'll have a ton of kids in there. This year, we had two to three classes in her music. Allison is a little bit of an anomaly herself, and she loves to have the big groups. She can do a lot more harmonizing, she can do a lot more with the choir, so she, um, she welcomes having large groups during that time. Um, yeah, and then I know, and the, the daily PE has always kind of been a concern, so um, we are looking at either doing the two recesses like, like um Rockville or um, our BLT also came up with, you know, maybe we can give the last ten, fifteen minutes of STEM class can also be um time for recess for those kids to get out there. And so we kind of arranged the schedule so that it would, would work out, they would have that time. Other than that, it's really staying the same as last year. Um, Level Two is different. I see them at the very bottom. Level Two does have PE every day. We do get those kids into um the gym for adapted PE um every day. And then you can kind of see like their, their schedule is a lot smaller. Timing permits. So is it still six out of every ten days they have PE? So it's not what it was this year, six out of ten? Four out of six, yeah.
But are you, are you increasing the recess time then?
Yes. Yep, on the days when they don't have PE, they can have the.
And how long would they be?
They're usually fifteen minutes each.
So they'd get thirty minutes of activity on those days? Correct?
Yes.
Versus this year, the most thing, it was twenty-five, when they didn't have PE.
Yeah.
Would they have, would they have recess on the days they have PE though, too? Two or one?
Just one, if they choose. Our teachers really, you'll see a lot of times, kids will, they'll take them outside, like if they decide, kind of like what you were saying, if they decide that they need, okay, we all just need to get up and go outside, you'll go outside play for ten minutes, come back in. Kids love it because there's only twenty of them out there instead of.
So like I said, no decisions tonight, uh probably by the July board meeting, they would need to know.
Yeah, we can, we got the information and we can kind of go through it.
You can hold around, we're around.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, four point three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five needs assessment.
Okay, uh, as part of the budget process, uh, districts are required to put together an annual needs assessment. Uh, very proud of our district on what we do and putting this together uh with the work of our building administrators, their building leadership teams, their teachers, the site councils, and of course, our board board members that sit on these site councils. They did a lot of work, uh, but it does fit around our budget considerations. Tonight is just a first look, you can act that, what Jenny put in front of you, and if you look at the, so you don't have to squint up there. Pull up this eleven by seventeen that has the one page. Uh, it says September eleventh of twenty twenty-three, and Jim's name up there. This is last year's, I thought it'd be a good start, spot before we dive in and bring the principals up to kind of review uh what we said we were gonna accomplish and uh, and see what we did. So really, I think it's the far right column. And so as we look at Rockville, uh continued improvements to school safety, uh we did that, uh the board uh put in place, you know, that we wanted to hook with the city, a second SRO. They have hired um enough, uh so we will be putting a second SRO in place the next year. And it's just not that, uh, so that will probably need to be on obviously this year's uh continued uh needs assessment. Uh.
Okay, what did you say, when is the second SRO that's coming school, you will have?
And so we will have that, they were able to hire enough, and so actually in talking to Chief Weber, he's actually going to train two on the fours. But we'll always have two full-time, so maybe if someone else has to go do something else, then you'll be able to put someone else. So we'll have, because they go through an SRO training, uh, so he's actually gonna train two more. Uh, but we will always physically, that'll also free up um some patrol time, so we can have SROs in the evenings. Uh, we don't have usually coverage in the evening in our big events, and uh that would be a, a plus that we have. If you guys go to sporting events and activities in other communities, usually you see, you know, if you're a Spring Hill Johnson County Sheriff Officer there. We just have lacked that, so I feel better. Usually the only uh time we have police presence is at our football games and graduation. Rarely at any of the big basketball games, none of the middle school events, and so I do think that's important to help our admin of just having police presence there. Uh, continue to increase pay, obviously, over the board, uh through negotiations and support staff, uh, I, I think, but we knocked it out of park there. Uh, we just talked about chronic absenteeism. Now, of course, uh, this uh needs assessment was put together by Mrs. Fleming and others, so uh this year obviously it was Crater. So on there was additional counseling and title. Um, we, we weren't able to do that, uh, and honestly, when their budgets, uh, and we're gonna be discussing some some pretty high uh additions when we talk about property and casualty and even health insurance, so um, we do have a full-time title teacher there, Ms. Hanley, and a full-time social worker, uh, but not additional. Uh, continued support of PLCs in MTSS, a group of Rockville staff members just got back from Tulsa for PLCs, going down to um Wichita for MTSS, uh, Dave and I were just sent an email from uh the state with MTSS one because we're doing so much good work. In fact, I mean, told the admin that uh they wanna work with us on another uh program, because we're always uh talked about at the state level that we're doing such good work in that program. Uh, support for PD, uh, we put a lot of uh money and time and commitment into professional development, probably the one of the biggest ones is you're gonna hear from the State Department and the legislators, it's required of what's called structural literacy. And so one program, oh, and Janelle's talked about, UFLI for the University of Florida, but another is letters training, and so uh, we have a lot of teachers signed up, Kim Parentis is actually gonna be teaching that class here on site, we had so many teachers here on site. There'll be some teachers as far away from Piper coming to that as well. Uh, update science curriculum, we set forth, and we knew this year was a potential K twelve science adoption. But really, K two didn't feel like they actually needed a, a, a set curriculum. And so they're uh not gonna necessarily have a science textbook, uh, they'll still do some basic science and social studies, as Ms. Crater talked about, but as far as coming to the board and purchasing something, we didn't need to do that. And then all the rest would be in the kind of the purple document, uh, since they don't do state assessments, so. You didn't see any uh scores in the, in the forty-fives and then in the fifties, so if the boards, uh, you know, as we get through this, keeping those same benchmarking scores, you have been provided that information. A lot are repeats, so, but I'll just kind of highlight the, the differences, so at Rockville, uh, same or at the top. The one where it says update science curriculum, they are currently piloting this year's science, so uh you purchased six twelve new science resources with Dave in April, I believe. Uh, but uh, third, fourth, and fifth grade weren't quite ready, so they are piloting some science resources. So Dave will probably bring that to you guys, uh, if they choose to do that, the same cycle like he usually does in April. Other things were, were similar. At the middle school, um, all were um similar uh as well, and, and we did get new science curriculum. At the high school, uh, discussed this with Dr. Vander and Mr. Pickman, like utilize student services. They felt like that kind of goes with the statement right before there, you know, how can student services help with chronic absenteeism? Um, and obviously, we are gonna have a new student services uh this year, and so I know um, that continued support as well. SEL curriculum, um, you know, we use seven mindsets district-wide. It is a tough uh thing to do at the high school level, just being honest, uh, and if you have a high schooler, uh, you know, they're driven, they, they like to take the classes, they are interested in, they sign up for everything. And then to put in place, oh, by the way, you need to do this socially emotional. They, they know it's an added thing, and so it is tough to have buy-in from students, and honestly, some from staff as well. And it is a requirement by the state, uh, it's part of our accreditation as well. So at the high school level, it does look different, uh, we are doing it, uh, but it, it's easier and buying the, the younger the grades, with the high school level, when you're taking away their study hall and throwing a lesson on them, uh, they, they can balk at that a little bit, so it's continued struggle at the high school. Uh, but it's, it, it's gonna still, you know, be a part of our day. Uh, how often, Amy, do we do those?
Every Tuesday.
Every Tuesday. But some kids wish, or probably a lot of kids wish we wouldn't do that, so we're continuing to evolve that, but uh I'm talking to them this morning. And I agree with Dr. Vander, it was tough, uh, for some of that buy-in.
What's the state requirement for SEL?
That you can show proof that you're doing uh a program or that you're providing, you know, some type of social emotional program, curriculum.
Just, it's just, it's pretty broad.
Yes, so they don't say this many minutes or whatever, so that's why we don't. Because if we tried any harder, you guys would probably be hearing from parents, uh, or even students, uh, so we're almost at, as far as we can push that program at the high school level. So I just thought that was a good start to, you know, kind of share, I, I think we put a really good needs assessment, and we were able to check most of those boxes, uh, which is kudos to, we, we had a well-thought uh strategic and, and needs assessment plan for last year. The next documents you have, and I, and I printed those off, so, and then we'll have the buildings coming forward. And like I said, they're not approving a needs assessment tonight, we're just starting the process. We'll talk about this in July, we'll talk about this in August. You can see last year on September eleventh, when you approved the needs assessment, going through the budget considerations. You know, on the budgets, uh, we still have not received even our final uh assess valuations from Janet White. Uh, we don't have any budget software yet, Katie and I go to Green Bush next Monday to uh KSD can discuss kind of the, the, the new budget software. And so we can't even start developing as far as the new software in the budget. As we know, we've had a lot of budget conversations from capital outlay to obviously staffing, to programming through uh consideration all the time as well. So what you have in there by building, you can see the Rockville Elementary, Circle Grove one, um. There are nine tabs to the, to the needs assessment. Each building does two, uh, so they do this grid that you see in front, and then if you kind of go to the back then through site councils, work, and BLTs and everything else, they do A, B, and C, which then help the district fill out theirs, which is your other big uh blank form. So Janelle, and I guess if there's some Circle Grove stuff, Dave, uh, and then you have um, oh, obviously, Mr. Apple is part of your site council as well, and, and so, um we can just go through, uh, or Janelle, if you wanna just highlight uh some items, and then obviously, your parents and, and your internal stakeholders are BLTs. Uh, those would be kind of more as you get to the end on section nine. And then those feed into the barriers and to the budget action items. She doesn't have, she doesn't fill out C because they don't do state assessments, the other buildings you'll see C filled out at the end, so. But if you kind of just wanna discuss the process and uh, and to board members, please share any thoughts and, uh, as well. And then I'll start kind of just taking some notes on the big page, so, go ahead, Ms. Crater.
Um, so, um, Mr. Apple was able to join us for our discussion in uh the third quarter um on our needs assessment, um, so our site council met, that has made up of um our stakeholders, parents, um, a board member, uh, teachers, we have a special education teacher as well, myself. Um, I think the first page is more demographics and how we assess, um, so of course, we use um uh pass bridge to help us uh see how our students are progressing. Um, we are using interventions and tiered intervention support to make sure all kids are learning um and getting what they're needing, and then it just kind of breaks it down um by how many students, um students with IUPs on that first page. Uh, our second page um is more looking at um social emotional growth and uh, we, I think we utilize uh the seven mindsets really well in our building. Um, and uh we utilize Saber to help us look at. we, I think we utilize, um, the seven mindsets really well in our building, um, and, uh, we utilize Sabers to help us look at individual students that might need additional support from, um, our, our counselor or, I'm sorry, our social worker, Lisa Wilson. Um, and then we look at like how are our kids coming in ready for kindergarten? Um, so we do use the ASQ questionnaire, um, we are looking at our IEP records, it's so helpful to have Circle Grove and those kids coming up. Um, kindergarten roundup, we get to know the kids a little bit and have screenings, um, so that's super helpful. Um, and then, um, looking at how we're civically engaged. Um, still something I think we can work on, but we have recycling club, canned food drives with agafe, and the kids' heart challenge. So that's kind of that page. Go to the third page, our curriculum needs. Um, so we have appropriate and adequate instructional materials. Um, it would be helpful to add a few additional pieces such as, um, an ESOL resource. Um, we don't have a high number of ESOL students, but, um, we do have five, and we wanna make sure that we're giving them the support that they need to continue to grow and be proficient in English.
What is the ESOL?
Um, it's English as second or other language, so or ELL sometimes, so English as out of language learner.
So the actual, you know, students that follow that program, you might hear they're ELLs, they're English language learners, the program is ESOL. So Cassie Hunt, uh, is kind of our district coordinator and helps with, uh, obviously it's a smaller population, but nonetheless, we need to, you know, make sure that those students have the appropriate resources. So I would say, you know, if that is, and I've circled it, that that one right there is definitely from a budgetary standpoint, because that does affect, uh, learning at an early level, the ESOL resources and then. So our current core, uh, program at K-five is a McGraw-Hill program called Wonders. Uh, we were already up for cycle to start looking at that ELA core adoption next year. Big legislative push is, like I said, something, and if you read, is the structured literacy. Uh, we found out that our core doesn't have that, uh, so it's kind of good timing. Uh, we've supplemented that with the UFLY, with this now letters training, we also have pathways to reading, so some of those. But you really wanna find the core, and you wanna explain, and like what, when it says structured literacy, just so everyone kinda knows what that.
It's very much a systematic and explicit way of teaching our phonics, um, and so our base skills, they talk about Scarborough rope, and it's woven together over time, our base skills are phonics, um, our graph beans, understanding, um, all of our letters, all of our sounds, and then how those move together, and then you add in the higher level core at the top, and that's your vocabulary, that's your, um, main idea, your ELA, um, concepts. Um, and so we have to give them that strong support, especially K through two, um, so that they can decode. Um, the differences that we see kind of in our, a balanced literacy, which is what we did several years ago, um, and we're moving into the structured literacy, so sometimes we talk about right now, we're kind of straddling in between the two, balanced and structured, um, as we move into better resources that align with structured literacy. Um, a lot of like leveled readers, um, and in structured literacy, we wanna see decodables because we want kids to be able to decode what they're reading. And so it's very much, that's that UFLY for us, um, so K, uh, kindergarten started that this year in the second semester. Next year, we're moving first and second to, um, our phonics instruction being explicit and systematic through the UFLY instruction.
I'm pretty sure we peaked in our class, we did, um, the tours that they were doing.
Yeah.
Mrs. Cash's class.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're right. Nikki wants to come in there and say that.
So the nice thing is it's thirty minutes, and, and what we want is we wanna see those OTRs or opportunities for students to respond. And so it's a very quick, um, fast-paced instruction that really helps kids map, um, the skill that they need to be good readers. Um, and so that's kind of where we're moving to, and so that's why you'll see, uh, we kind of put that structured literacy core ELA curriculum, and then, um, but that's coming as we're getting ready to look at that, um, next year. That's a very quick, on surface level, between structured and balanced.
Well, pretty good.
All right. Um, let's see, most of the rest of that are upper level. If we go to the page four, um, staffing needs, um, staffing is something that we always kind of struggle with, especially in our, um, parent educators, um, I do have the life skills program as well. Um, it's, it's just something that helps us give that intervention for kids. Because it's kind of when we do that intervention time, it's an all-hands-on-deck concept to make sure that we are having small groups so that students are getting that chart, what they need. You know, here it is, when time, you know, what I need. Um, so having all of our positions filled makes it so much easier to support those students, um, let's see.
Do we have, do we have, I mean, app, looks like we're short of four or something. Do we have any applications out there that we're?
I have an interview on Wednesday, so, but we still need people, so.
Broadmore does too, uh, middle school and high school, of course, they don't have as many, but they're fully staffed with Paris, uh, Cindy and Janil, and potentially out here at, are you full, Megan?
I'm minus one, but I think it's gonna be full tomorrow.
Okay, good, sorry about that.
She's optimistic.
Yeah. And then it does say there, and they will continue, uh, you know, at Circle Grove, we're continuing identifying kids, so special ed out of Circle Grove, it just fluctuates, so, so we might not start with the need of having one, but then, uh, so Jana and, and we get more referrals, we potentially need more support there, so.
And then obviously that's something we've worked with in the budget to try to increase the pay for those positions.
Yes. And PALA, uh, settled, uh, they, I, I don't think their compensation was quite as high as ours, uh, Paris, you know, where we tried at least every hourly staff member to get a dollar was our goal. I think Paris, I think I saw, got a sixty-five cent increase.
Yeah, about that, I think, I actually pulled the schedule today.
Are all Paris paid through PALA?
Parent educators now, aides.
Aides.
To us, yes.
But all Paris are through PALA.
Oh, all on more? All parent educators, yeah, even though they work in our buildings, have a four sixteen email address, they are all.
So our, our hands get tied with that, I think it's important for the community to know that we don't have complete control over that situation.
Right. And it's sometimes, you know, as they interview, uh, so aides, uh, so sometimes maybe they need health insurance. So we have an aide because we provide health insurance, if they don't need health insurance, because they have another way, then they, they are fine working as a para, so. We kinda like on the food service, if they need certain things, they can work for us, or they can work for open, so. We do try to balance that need when we're actually trying to fill that position. But we just don't have as many aides, so like they have maybe three instructional aides where she has a lot more Paris than that.
And, uh, our district compared to surrounding districts, we're very comparable with our aide pay.
Yes.
Right?
I've looked at one, and I've shared that spreadsheet all the hourly, yeah.
So I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah. Yes.
So I think, um, one of the things that's most important for us at, at Rockville and Circle Grove is staff development, I feel see that across the board for the district. Um, so staff development, so, uh, letters training and our PLCs, um, we continue to work with that. Um, uh, in talking with Dave, they have the Project Peace, uh, program that's affiliated with KU, that's, it's a year-long program that they're working on for their professional development. Uh, we work, uh, closely with TAZN, uh, support from them, Green Bush and Solution Tree is who, um, puts on the PLC Institute, at Work Institute. Um, so that's, um, will continue to be important for the success of, um, our employees and our students. Um, we definitely have a wonderful space for learning at Rockville and at Circle. Um, I, our carpet's going in right now as we speak, um, and it looks great, so we've got almost all of our classrooms done, and that will be, that will continue. Um, we do have, I think, engaged parents here at Lewisburg, it's something to be proud of. Um, and, you know, I, we try to communicate, um, and open to allow, um, just that dialogue through our site council and weekly newsletters, so great PTA, uh, PTO, um, helping us out, and we appreciate it. And then, um, if you go to page five, that kinda talks about, and you guys see that because you are on the weekly emails, uh, newsletter, social media posts, our website, um, I think are all adequate. Let me turn to page six. Very proud of our building attendance rate, um, at ninety-three point five percent this year, and of course, um, looking building-wise, eight percent chronic absenteeism rate. Um, and you saw the breakdowns, um, but things that we're looking for, um, technology, we are making, we're getting new, um, computers for all of our students this year, and our, we call them cows, computers, parts on, you know, computers on wheels. Um, so that's great that we're getting those. Um, attendance is going to still be super important, it is our number one intervention when students are there, they're learning. Um, staffing, um, you know, that's important for us to be fully staffed. And then we do have, um, the shared staff, but with the music position, um, so a lot of that has to do with us being creative and communicating between, uh, Broadmore and our music teacher. Um, some things that kind of are big picture items later for like building that are unique is, um, additional, um, commercial grade sun shade for the playground, um, some additional door armor than different parts of the building we have, um, for all of our classrooms, we have them. Um, but maybe some additional spots, and then the biggest one would be just a another entrance or exit, but that's, that's for much, that's for in the future. In the perfect world, that's what I would have.
So then really, and like I said, the needs assessment, big spreadsheet, so two tabs you'll see an agent, so then it really takes what Janil was busy with about down to the A, B, C, which then on the board spreadsheet, you see the A, B, C before the board gets in the board draft down comments as well, so a lot of this she discussed, but just go ahead, on his A and B there.
Um, and so for, it's, it's definitely that staffing, if we can be fully staffed for, uh, to have those parent educators to help with our have the smallest intervention groups possible, um, resources to implement, um, research-based interventions uh, that vertically aligned, um, structured literacy, um, for ELA, it would be lovely to have that K through five, and that's something we'll look at this year. Um, UFLY phonics, we have first, we have the hand, our manuals coming, um, but we also need, um, just the resources to go with that, there's some manipulatives and blending boards and things like that. Um, continued parental support for attendance, and then that, uh, pre-K through second grade ESOL, um, curriculum, or it doesn't have to be a curriculum, but a resource, um, so that we can ensure those kids, um, our ELL learners are learning at high levels. Um, so kind of the budget items would be that structured literacy, ELL and resource adoption. Um, we already have the manuals, but the manipulatives for the UFLY instructions, but specifically the blending boards for every student. And of course, you know, with the increased pay for support staff, we can draw more people in, um, that's kind of the breakdown of Rockville and Circle.
Uh, the Project Peace Program is an ESOL, um, professional development program that KU has that are teacher-type at Circle Grove applied for, and that are gonna be a part of the program, if we get all the paperwork turned in and approved by, by the University of Kansas.
Hey, this is, uh, this is Apple and Mrs. Goodman, uh, Jennifer sits on Cindy's, uh, site council, and we've been an active part in, uh, leading these discussions as well, so you two take it away.
So, um, we met, and like you said, Mrs. Goodman is our board, um, representative that, um, discusses the needs assessment with us. Um, again, we kind of just went through, um, we just went basically the same kind of information that Janil went over, right? Um, everything from last year, as, uh, Dr. Grimo went through, and this year we're looking at, um, you know, again, we use the Sabers, we use the My Sabers, uh, we're screened three times a year. Um, our school-wide goal is to have students meeting our expected behaviors in all three areas, which is social, academic, and emotional behaviors. Um, the different things that we've looked at, um, you know, civically engaged, yes, we have the Veterans Day concerts, we have our afternoon gratitude, we have our Daughters of the Revolution, um, our assemblies, our displays, we work with the BFW in the American region to have our various displays. Um, curriculum needs, um, looking at extended opportunities, including like the homework assistance and tutoring through Wildcat mornings, par hour, Wildcat hour. We have our family curriculum nights for math and ELA, um, things that we are looking to have, um, include our science and ELA curriculum, just updated and adopted, we've kind of already talked about how that's in the works. Um, intervention materials for our MTSS is always in need of updating, or just, um, you know, next year we'll have an additional fifth grade teacher, so making sure that we get the supplies that we need for that person as well. Um, capacities, those have all been, um, answered for the trainings. Um, we have sent almost all of our teachers, um, have received the letters training, or they are signed up, I think I only have, I mean, literally like two or three that are not, um, that are not signed up or have not been through the letters training, um.
And on that, uh, cause it does deal with budgets, uh, so we are compensating our teachers to go through letters training. If they, there's all kind of a unit one and a unit two, so wherever unit they finish, uh, we'll pay them seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, so, you know, I just think that's important to talk about as well, so through professional development dollars, so. Because they'll be out here in the evenings, how many times, Dave, next year?
Uh, seven total days.
Seven times, and so what's the time, like four to seven?
Um, four hours, it's more.
So four to eight, so if you think a teacher taught all day, and then they're gonna do that, and then that's about half the time, but even after Kim's finished with them, they have homework to do. So really, it's the compensate the teachers for being out here after contract time, and then also that, uh, that homework as well. Uh, it's so important to be structural literacy trained and have proof of that, that soon, uh, teachers at elementary level and special education now K-12 will not be able to re- renew their license without proof of that. So there are some serious teeth in it legislatively, K, KSD with licensure as well.
Again, we were kind of on the forefront of that with getting everybody trained already, I mean, there's so many teachers at Rockville and Broadmore that are already trained in it, so, and then for the district to sign up to bring it here locally, because what we were doing was, we were sending teachers four times a year. We had, I think I had four different cohorts, and each cohort had three to four teachers in it that were leaving and going to, um, Fort Scott, or, you know, down to Green Bush or, uh, Lawrence, or different places, so.
So missing their teaching duties, uh, so I'd much rather them stay in the classroom and not pay a sub, and so pay them to give up some of their eating time.
Was this the last first, was last year the first year you got here?
Okay. Uh, that she was sending people.
Two years ago, they started with, um, some of our teachers started with volume one, and then they finished up last year and did volume two, and another whole cohort started volume one last year. They will finish up with volume two this coming year, and then a big group of us will be doing the volume one.
But this is the first time we've really hosted this big, uh, new event, I mean.
We've already signed up our new, um, teachers.
Yeah.
Sure, there we go.
I think by, and I forgot the date, but it's by twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-seven.
Twenty twenty-seven, thank you, so, uh, and teachers, uh, renew for a five-year license, obviously a lot of professionals around this table, you have to do CUs to get your license, so no different with schools. So by twenty twenty-seven, if a teacher has not shown proof, and they get certificates of a structured literacy training, so in our case, letters, uh, they, they would not be able to be renewed their license, so.
All right, so section four, that's kind of, do that, um, anything, please interrupt me, section five, our staff needs, um, we feel like we have adequate staff, um, to meet the guidelines, and like you said, we do have, I have interviews, um, this week as well for parent educators. Um, we don't have a librarian, I did put that in there, that's something that we've talked about. Um, but we, uh, do have a wonderful library aide, um, for, for this coming school year. Um, I think we're all trained, principals are trained very well. Um, for, um, development, we just need to continue with our pushing our MTSS and pushing the PLCs and the, and the letters training. Um, yeah, I think we just need to continue, um, and not, not sit back and not wait. Uh, we also have some math, um, that's, uh, some math training that our, our staff has been, uh, going to as well with the state, so it's exciting. Um, spaces for student learning, yes, um, you know, we talked about some repairs that need to be made. Um, we talked about the badge readers, um, We talked about the badge readers. I think the biggest discussion at our site council kind of centered around our accessibility. We'd really love to get our playground, that mulch out of there and our swings set up so they're more accessible for our students who are in wheelchairs. We'd really like to get a swing where they are able to come in and actually come up onto a platform and swing with their classmates instead of what we, what we have now. And we don't really use it because it's, it causes us to have to take the child out of their wheelchair and place them into a separate, you know, stabilizing kind of swing. And we just don't like to have to move them like that. So we like for them to be a little bit more independent as well and not have to rely on us to, to have them swing. So we want them to be included.
The only mulch we have left are the swings. So our three playgrounds out here and then at Rockville and Broadmore have what's called that port in place rubber. But the swing set at Broadmore still does. And so it is a budgetary item. There are grants and we've been successful through the used rubber tire grant through K D H E helped us get the other three. So we've tried there and will continue to try. But that's definitely the additional badge readers we are. And we talked about that in capital outlay that we're doing a new system for our badge readers and, and not just new, but we're adding. So right now if staff and kids are out in that north playground at Broadmore, none of those north doors have a badge reader. So if they needed to get in quickly, and I know you guys discussed this at site council, sides knocking or, you know, so now the, some of those north doors that staff members will be able to badge quickly and if they're needed to get in for whatever safety reason. So I'm glad you guys identified that, you know, honestly, probably that should have already been taken care of. And then accessibility and outside front door. And this, and I mentioned this because it is kind of a, it gets brought up a lot. So if someone's potentially in a wheelchair or whatever, you know, the push button thing, it's, it's where it kind of compromises our school's safety. So, you know, everything's locked down. Sometimes we get asked, you know, well, if I pushed a button, can I, even sometimes a staff member that's maybe in a wheelchair. And so like at the high school, we do have the, the, the bullion that sets, the bullion that sits there that you can push and lets you into the foyer. Then you're, you have to be buzzed in or identified. The other buildings, we don't have that system. So.
We fixed it this year by, we just ordered off, you know, Amazon, a, a doorbell system that goes on the outside. And so if somebody needs access, they hit that button to alert us and then we go and buzz them in.
And we, along with those lines, there was issues as far as the, like a designated area for the wheelchairs or anybody to cross from like the parking lot to, to the sidewalk. And we got that taken care of also. So and the ladies in the, in the morning are really good at making sure people are stuck on either side of that.
Lunch, people like to park on the crosswalk. It makes it really hard for people to, like, we're, we're training our drivers as well. Family needs, I feel, yes, we, we have a family engagement committee and they schedule various activities throughout the year that are just, some of them tradition and some of them go along with our seven mindsets. And some of them are just fun, you know, things that we will think of doing from year to year. Caregiver training programs, our parent information nights throughout the year. We had our short, Broadmore brief videos this year, weekly newsletters. I feel like, like, yes, yes, we have site council, P T O. Jill, Janil and I are meeting with them tomorrow to plan for next year.
And on that, maybe there's a lot of leadership change over in P T A, which is fine. I mean, it's like, it's like whether it's church or anything, the same people do it. So some of our, like McKenzie Phillips and others have been great. I mean, you know, after four years, I think she's stepping down. And so if you haven't heard, there's going to be quite a bit of leadership at our elementary P T O, but as strong as ever. And I don't blame people for handing over.
And a lot of the ones that stepped up into more leadership roles were already, were there in some capacity or another.
They're very strong.
Yeah, they've been great, they've been great. Communication, I feel like we do it all. I don't know if it's always red, but we do it all. And so we also, yeah, have our social media accounts. We are updating the webpage periodically. Other information, some of these I did put, like, we're unable to run this report for the district only because yeah, I, I wasn't able to figure that out, but you saw that now. Our B L T looked at these following non-assessment related issues, our technology, additional regular support when, when issues arise, updated Chromebooks and equipment. We're actually getting all new Chromebooks at Broadmore, so we're really excited about that. So that's kind of already in the works as well. We have implemented some different ways of getting, like if one of the students Chromebooks goes down, we have like a bin for our tech department to check. And so that way it gets the support that they need and gets it fixed a little bit better, a little more timelier than when we send emails. And gosh, I know they get inundated with crazy emails. So that's been helpful. So there's a lot of things going on there. Attendance, communicating with families on the need for students to be at school. Staffing, working with shared schedules can be limiting, so just working on that and being flexible. Additional resources, yes, you know, technology with various new equipment. Attendance and staffing, sometimes we, we just need to be creative. I think what we did this year worked, so we're going to continue doing that. I already had a teacher this past week say, are we going to continue doing like the attendance incentives? Cause she was kind of playing with our new theme for next year and how to decorate their pod and figure. So teachers are off, they're already, already planning for that. The barriers that we came up with at site council. Our special education funding needs to be corrected at the state level. That was again, like I said, a big piece of our conversation was all about special education. You know, the state is not funding it accurately. And so that would really allow our resources to be distributed and allocated more appropriately. Continued professional development and all of those, all of those areas. Fact fluency is the math program that some of our teachers have started to look into and implement. And then a couple of our teachers have actually been asked to present at the annual M T S S conference in September. So we're proud of that. Kite is the Kansas assessment program that kind of helps us with like understanding what essential standards are trying to be tested over and making sure that we are working on those. And then built in time for teachers to meet, to go through the data and plan collaboratively. Looking at our schedule, I didn't point this out, but at the bottom, we are implementing an additional P L C time once a month for each grade level to go over behavioral data and just kind of not just have like a academic data meeting every week like we are doing, but to also have a P L C or a meeting with our teams on looking at the behavior data and looking at individual students and kind of brainstorming what supports we can give in that M T S S tier there as well. And then, yeah, the last one, just making sure our schedule has time for everything that we need to get in. Budget, we just need to ensure allocations are used to improve student achievement. Ensure money for professional development is given to these areas that have been identified and continue to partner with Green Bush, Tassin and Solution Three. If needed, budget compensation for staff that work outside of their contractual time to plan. Time is not enough. Our staff needs resources and supplies in order to provide the high level of instruction. So just making sure we're getting them what they, what they need. Currently our preliminary assessment scores indicate that our students are at level two, three or four, the percentages below. And I, this is how I knew, I, I had already put in like what my at or above grade level. So these are our third grade E L, our E L A and our math scores for level two and above at each grade level. We want to, we, we expect to keep students at that level or above. We do understand there may be times where percentages may fluctuate depending on various factors like this year. We just ask the board to consider each year as a work in progress as we identify current needs in our students and adjust instruction and make sure that we are getting the resources and things that we need to meet those.
Well done. Thanks, Jennifer, for being a part of that. Next at the middle school, sorry for some reason tying Megan's print off a little smaller. So you are going to have to get out your bifocals on this one.
Yeah, I was just going to, can I look my glasses?
And I would say one and two, I would start there at three, Megan, on the curriculum needs there.
First of all, Lanny is a part of our site council. I wanted to recommend that because I really enjoy having him in the building, especially having family members that, that work in the building. It's kind of fun to have to interact with us quite a bit. So, I mean, a lot of things going on at the middle school are just like they are at the elementary. And I think they've said a lot of really important things, but starting with curriculum needs. I know we talked about early on in the year going, we have Wildcat Den that we offer in, in the mornings, which is one day a week on Wednesday mornings. We offer Wildcat focused, offer Wildcat Den every day, Wildcat Focus one day a week. We also did math intervention, as you know, in the morning. And so we wanted to see how that would go second semester and try to offer that in the, after school. One day a week, giving kids the opportunity that can't come in the morning, come in the afternoon. As you saw from our math state assessment scores, we did really well. So and I, I credit Ms. Whedon, the sixth grade teacher who put a lot of time and effort in coming every day at seven AM on Thursday mornings. I also wanted to share that we have Wildcat Focus on Wednesday mornings and we ask students to have five or more missing assignments to come more so to have an extra, you know, 45 minutes or so in the morning to, with the opportunity to make up assignments. And we have some teachers that are offering up, maybe if they, kids can't get there in the morning, maybe offering it that same day or having them go Wednesday afternoon. It's just, we, we just call offering a safe space because sometimes, as you know, when kids get home, the opportunity does not arise to get work done because either they're, they're helping parents out and kids are going off to a job, transportation issue. So as many, as much time as we can offer our students to be in the building, safe for the environment, we feel like that they will get their work done. And so all of those things are going really well. Moving down, oh, we, section two, but okay, moving down for current technology, I mean, we, I really appreciate all the technology opportunities that our, our students have. As I stated, everyone is getting new Chromebooks, which is amazing for this upcoming school year. We, we need them to keep up. We have a lot of battery issues and, and freezing of the Chromebooks when they get to the office. It pulls them out of the classroom, which is what we don't want. And they have to either get a replacement Chromebook or, you know, plug it in or something. We did purchase this year more charging cords that the teams could have more opportunities for students to charge their Chromebook and then cost them as much as we want them to be prepared when they get there. I don't want them to be, you know, punished by having to leave the classroom and not being able to charge it there so they can charge it in the classroom and then stay there and get their work done. And so, and, and the learning happens in the classroom, definitely not in, in our office. So we appreciate that. We're looking at, we have teachers that are several using EdPUB and, and quit this. And I've talked to Dr. Beerman about that as well, about having just more technology opportunity for, for the classroom. I would like to flip to talking about training, staff development is necessary for teachers. I, I, I really appreciate all the professional opportunities that we have to, to grow as educators, especially in administration and not only that, teachers, you know, M T S S and P L C that I have both attended with, with teachers. I think that I could probably attend that and I would think my teachers would agree. I could attend that every year for the next 10 years and still let know a quarter of what they have to offer. They're just a great opportunity and learning opportunities. And they sell books and resources. And I just took two teachers with us to P L C and some teachers that could retire right now. And they just, you know, light bulbs went off and rejuvenation and excitement. And those are teachers that could be retiring. They're like, when we get back, Mr. Reese, you know, when I, when I get back, I can't wait. And that's just what I kept hearing, you know, and Ms. Bumper is, you know, messaging me, hey, I want to buy this book now. So it was just this exciting opportunity. So a lot of professional development that you guys allow us to, to attend. And, and coming from other districts, it's not always that opportunity. So we really appreciate that. So thank you and I hope that you let us continue with that. I, I mentioned in here a little bit, I mean, it'd be nice to have a nurse full-time, not just part of the day because we have a lot of things that are occurring in the mornings when Nurse Spottle is at the high school doing, fulfilling her duties there and then, and coming over. It, great opportunity for us. That, that, that's something that I see, our secretary are trying to help out as much as possible, but they are not nurses. And so it would be nice to have somebody full-time there. Family needs, I have just been all year, like we got to get parents in the building more. We gotta, we gotta, we gotta, you know, I have this fathers club that we started and, and we'll do more with that. But we have a B L T meeting tomorrow and exciting. We're going to talk about a family involvement committee. I've already put a survey out at the end of the year asking, hey, who would like to be a part of this committee? And I have a lot of teachers that said they'd be in. So I, I felt like, I didn't know that Cindy has one, but it sounds like she has one as well. So I'm excited to hear what opportunities or what ideas that our teachers on that committee want to, to get parents in the building more.
I love the dads club and the fathers club. I know my husband, I appreciate, appreciated that because a lot of times it's, it's the moms a lot of time with things. So I think it's good to get those down.
It is, and we'll do a kickoff with fathers this year. I want to, you know, share all the things, we'll do a kickoff and we'll get them out again. They, we had a great time and especially them grilling out for assessment. I think in the assessment barbecue was just a hit because of our stuff, not so well. We got to keep eating these kids, right? But the dads had the best time cooking and grilling and, and doing all the things. So that was awesome. But yes, fathers, okay, family engagement, fathers club. Okay, site council, we talked, we did talk quite a bit about getting parents involved because our, our parents are on the site council. We talked about engaging, seeing if we can get more people on our site council. Maybe I know other schools do it in the morning, but our site council really likes it in the evening. And I think we're going to continue that and try to get as many people on board. I know what I was going to say, I just remembered. And then we have a new cats club volunteer running our, our parent organization because our just bench who did an amazing job is moving on to the high school. And high school, we'd like to get her because she's a great advocate, but Melissa Lakeham is going to be taking over. And she is a para to teacher training right now. And she is amazing and very involved all year, just always wanting, you know, to ask me how she can do more and do more. So we've already met before the school year ended and I think I have three pages worth of typed notes and things she wants to do. So, and I a hundred percent believe that she will do those as, as much as we will allow her to do. So we're looking forward to that and raising as much money as we can for our students and our staff. So we're excited. Piggybacking on letters training, I think we, we have the largest number of teachers asking to be a part of, to be letters trained. And I say that because Broadmore and Rockville already had so many trained. But I was very excited about our veteran teachers that are not trained and willingly want to be a part of the training. So I'm excited to see what they learn and they, they bring back. And of course that will help in cross-curricular areas and all of our interventions and M T S S that we have going on. And I do want to talk about that. And I know that we've talked about the M T S S interventions that are going to be happening. And I am meeting with Tassin next week with, I think, all of Tassin is in a Zoom call with me. So we are meeting to, to perfect this and I have B L T meeting again tomorrow to try to. So our interventions are going to be happening a couple of times a week during Wildcat times. And we are pulling teachers out of having a Wildcat time on the daily so that they can be intervention specialists in their area. And we do this to help our students succeed and hopefully they learn on grade level and they do even better on assessment. So the only thing why I talk about resources is I'm not a hundred percent sure what resources we're going to need, but I know we do need resources because once we identify the standards and the areas they need, we need to be able to come up with. we do need resources, because once we identify the standards and the areas they need, we need to be able to come up with the material so they can learn it in about a three-reap rotation, and then be able to test out of that, and then being able to pull in other kids in that area. So, I feel good about, it's gonna be baby steps, it's not gonna be, you know, a hundred percent, you know, all in, but it kind of, I think Michael talked today in our meetings about how they're doing their PLCs and curriculum and work, and it's, you know, it is baby steps, gonna get there, but I feel very confident about our first steps with that MTSS intervention. All right, I think that we communicate really well as far as we do newsletters and Twitter, and I don't think, I would like our community to do a little bit more, invest a little bit more in Twitter, but I know City does Facebook and that works really well for Broadmore, but we'll continue with the weekly newsletters, and we have a lot on our website. Jody Yoder keeps helping us get better and better with putting information on there, and parents can find a lot of links to all of our newsletters on our website. Teachers do a great job of getting, we do, we screenshot grades, if you're a parent in my building, you know, you get a screenshot grade every Monday, and that kind of helps parents be aware of exactly what's going on, because kids, middle school kids, believe it or not, sometimes don't always come home with the correct information, it's weird. So, parents, if we are able to get that, and we are gonna do, we did implement a training for technology a little bit mid-year last year, but we're gonna do that this year at our back-to-school night, and we have also changed our back-to-school night. We had a lot of parents listening to what they have to say on site council. Parents want to be able to have their kids be in school for a few days, so they have a little bit more wherewithal about what teachers they have and a little bit more about the classes, and then they're gonna come, and we're gonna do a little seven-minute rotation with all the classes, plus the technology session and an athletic session as well. So, we hope it's a really great two-hour night, you can pack in as much, but teachers, our parents are gonna be able to follow their student's schedule and actually meet the teachers, and teachers in my BLT want to see your face, and they want to meet you, because it really helps equate, you know, their children to you and build relationships, so that's what they want, and that's what we're gonna do. But helps, because it does not fall on Rockville, LHS, or Broadmore, and I know a lot of people have students in a lot of different buildings. So, it'll be completely at the end of the rotation, so we're hoping that everyone comes to do that. So, until we will talk about technology, say Skyward specifically and Google Classroom, because we use that the most, and a lot of parents and current parents really want to be able to understand that, so we're gonna be there to help, so that will be happening. All right, moving forward a little bit, I'm gonna, to the next page. All right, really.
You go to back pages, which are barrier.
Okay, good.
It's a little bit bigger for you.
Thank you. Barrier, additional math help of all three goals, but the school board is really helping with paying a little bit and helping our teachers come in and work more with our students. Professional growth opportunities, which I just complimented you, you're continuously, if we didn't have funding for that, that would be a massive barrier, but the district loves to learn, and when teachers are given the opportunity, they are, they're taking it, so I appreciate that. And then additional intervention time for students, for tier two, three, and that's what we're working towards for the intervention piece. And then I just identified on the action, how you've already agreed to compensate in these areas, and I really believe and I hope that you are proud of our students, and especially our teachers, for, we have been giving them opportunities, you've been helping us do that with students, and then our assessment scores show a lot of growth, and I'm proud, proud of our teachers and the work they do, and they left to go home for summer, and I hope they enjoy every ounce of it, because I love the staff, they work really hard, we are asking for your approval, I think Dr. Bierman's doing that tonight, right, for a new math position, really excited. Our paras are almost full, we have hired a, I mean, excitingly enough, we need a maternity sub for our Spanish, for Cassie, and we have a Spanish-speaking sub, and potentially someone along with them, they just get interviewed tomorrow for the para position, and then they will be full. And we have great paras, and Mrs. Bose heads up our paras and runs that schedule, and man, it is a minute-by-minute constant change, because paras, if they're sick and they're not in the building or something happens, I mean, she is constantly revamping that to make sure our students are, needs are met, and I appreciate the work she does with that too, so.
So, you scared me by saying new math teacher or replacement math teacher.
Sorry.
Yeah, so.
Not a.
Yeah, not additional. Yeah, and they did approve that.
Thanks for letting us know.
So, you can let that staff member know that after this meeting.
Yes, I don't know if you have any questions, but I feel like LMS is in a really good spot. I feel like we're gonna continue to build our climate and our culture and make it a place that everyone wants to be. We had a parent donate a refrigerator into our lounge and getting kind of redone a little bit, so we just want our staff to love being there. I love being there.
Thank you, and thank you, Lanny, for being a part of that, appreciate it.
I do think she's right about getting more parents on the site council, because some of them, it's hard to get enough there sometimes, but they do have good input.
I mean, usually you have from parent, I know you obviously have you and Lanny and Stan.
About twelve of us total, with, we have a couple teachers, we have Lanny, and then the rest are parents.
So, you say four to six now?
Yes, yep, six.
Six, okay, thank you. All right, Dr. Bierman's come out to the podium, and so, obviously, a lot of the stuff's demographic stuff, I'd say the same thing, Amy, let us start there on page three of the curriculum and take it from there.
So, I was just gonna share a little bit about the, you know, I'm lucky, I get to be a part of a lead meeting every month with other principals. And our summer meeting is always enjoyable, lots of sharing, see data's all come out, so there's a lot of swapping of who's doing what, and one of the comments was, well, who in the world can get scores like that? And somebody said, well, fewer years for you. And so, we are lucky, our kids do really well, but just the demographics when you look at that, keep that in mind when we talk about kids that struggle, their scores that are low. I know those percentages are small, and some of those kids fall into multiple categories, but we do have kids that have needs. And it's not a complaint, it's an opportunity to create it, but we don't have math specialists, we don't have reading specialists. And so, when we get these kids and they still are in these places, not because they didn't have good support when they were younger, it is a challenge for us to figure out how to keep moving and play with and giving them all the needs, so I just wanted to draw your attention to that. I like the big paper, I'm seeing back. So, in here, just kind of skimming through some of the things, talking about, I know we already mentioned seven mindset, but that does come up in here. We talk about our social-emotional growth, I think that's an area, it's not a needs assessment, it's a worry assessment, but we do have kids with social-emotional needs. We screen them, our advisory teachers screen them, so teachers have an opportunity to rate those kids. Then we ask the kids to rate themselves. At the high school level, it's a great tool, but we have to have permission from parents, so we don't get a hundred percent of those. What we do is we look at those two pieces side by side when we have it, and we say, well, look, teacher says this, student says this. Maybe we agree, maybe we disagree, they both tell us a lot of things. So, that's a tool that we use, makes it a little bit harder when we don't get everyone to participate. I know that it's hard to explain to parents to get that permission, but it does kind of lead to also, like, we have our counselors trying to do multiple jobs and tasks, and that level of kids have need, really is growing. So, we talk about the curriculum, the needs of the kids, how trying to screen them and find them, support them, it's a huge job during the day. Doesn't fall just on counselors, teachers, and administrators, do a lot of work, we have a lot of kids that need support all day.
With doing that, I guess you could, if their kids or their students are filling it out, I guess you could think, you could think the kids are okay, but they may put something down that keys you that, okay, maybe there is.
Self-reporting sometimes is a catch, because it's pretty quiet, you don't have to talk, it gets submitted, and so, we will catch kids that are asking for help and reporting. So, it's too bad we can't get everyone to be able to take that, because it is a useful tool, for sure. So, I'm just talking about that, we, one of our, on that, my class, two of, yeah, two of the bottom size two there, we're talking about post-secondary. You know, I think one thing that's really hit me, just being finishing the second year of high school, I think the burden of really making sure all of our students have a plan. And so, I know we can talk about a lot of fancy ways to track it and make sure the kids are getting different experiences, but we have to find those kids early that are still seeking and looking and figure out how we can help them. Again, not just a counselor job, but teachers and advisory, people that have those connections with kids, just to make sure when they leave that they know what they're gonna do, and we provided opportunities. I think we do a great job of that, I would say we didn't send a ton of kids out without a plan, but probably one is too many, so it's really nice to be. When we did our walkthrough, the labs definitely turns out to be a very concerned, and I feel like those are getting replaced, so we're excited about having some new computer systems for our kids, so we haven't seen that just yet, I don't know that it's in the works.
On that, so both labs will be replaced, one, and you guys heard about that, and I know we took time with Mr. Rooney and his class. So, one will be PCs, the other will be Macs, so we will be getting both, so those are on order and kind of on standby. They'll be in place by August, honestly, we're just kind of waiting to see if we're pinning them out of this fiscal year or next fiscal year. So, the next couple of weeks, it's Katie and I work on closing down the budgets, so Stacy and Richard have those ready for us, and they'll be ready for kids, so that was obviously.
That is exciting, I mean, that was a huge need.
Yes.
I mean, I think there's some real opportunity for, I mean.
Sounds like they'll be exhibiting some Macs in there.
Yeah.
I personally don't like them, but.
With graphics and stuff, they really.
I mean, one of the parents on our site council is a graphic artist, and she's like, you can't do this without Macs, so.
Yeah, I get it.
Teacher professional development, it'll probably be.
Sure.
And I guess we should have said, we've kind of just, especially for the public listening too, but Joe Aaron Studenwell is part of the high school and has been very involved as well. So, I'm glad you're chiming in there, because we forgot to say that, so Joe Aaron has been an integral part of this process at the high school.
On page four, this was your review of our site council, so our BLT definitely sees a need for an additional counselor. So, last year we added Eliza, she was finishing her degree to be a counselor. It's a really interesting program, because you have to have basically contact hours to be certified. And so, teachers that are being counseled really have to get that counseling job to finish that program. So, we were lucky to be able to add her last year, which gave us three adults in that area. Marty is a social worker that has done a ton of counseling in that role, so he kind of, like you were saying, you know, kind of straddled the line, you know, of that counseling, social worker piece, so when he retired in January, we were at two, with Eliza and Shane, and Shane has retired. So, we did replace, when I say I worry about the kids, I just worry, because there's a lot of tasks that go through that office, and tasks have to get done, but students have to be taken care of, so we have, not brand-new to counseling, but brand-new to community, which community is really important for that area and that role, knowing who to call and who can you can get services from and how to help. And so, we're gonna really be on our toes, just making sure kids get those from the neighborhood. So, BLT does see that as a need, making sure we have enough support over there, and then also, like Megan said, a full-time nurse. Our music department BLT felt like, not a complaint that they were like sharing from them, but just that they see that the heavy load of the music department by losing one of their people, but that was the first.
You know, and on the counseling, so every year I meet with the high school administration after enrollment, and we look at numbers, and so, in the math department, we had some additional time, so we are going to have a math teacher being, so kind of we'll have, from an FT standpoint, two point five, correct? Is he gonna be able to be down there?
He'll be two blocks every, one morning, every morning he'll be in there one block, so two blocks total.
Okay.
And then semester two, lot three, just because the way seniors are out, so. So, there's some of that support.
That is an area, and like, I guess if we look at our rivals across the, over on the other side, so Paola has two full-time counselors, then they have what's kind of becoming real popular in Paola has it, and other districts do too, as you can call it whatever, but like a real-world coordinator. So, they work with businesses, they work with colleges, really allows the other two counselors to do, you know, just a plethora of things from crisis intervention to scheduling, you name it, but, so they would be coordinating with our community colleges, with job shadowing, as we continue to increase business partnerships. So, I have applied for a grant for the Patterson Foundation, that was part in there that would help fund that. Jim and I have met with Endowment and Pregas, so we continue to expand with our career technical offerings. So, grants are important, or if we can't get those and we see the need, but potentially, I know that would probably be very high on Dr. Van Reed's list of of that, and it would definitely be, and she's met with the gal at Paola, and I know.
And it kind of goes back to just, they know who their kids are, they know what they're gonna do, what they're gonna be, providing those resources, they've had experiences, they it's really, and it is a full-time job, it's, they do a lot of good things.
I'm over here on my sand.
So, I've written, so I have written two more, of course, the childcare one, the one I wrote was for seventy-five thousand, and I think, and I won't put the cart before the horse, or knock on wood, but I think I'm gonna get that one, because I've had some follow-up conversations. That was on to support our staff in two ways, one, our paras that are working on their teaching degrees to help pay for college on that, or we have staff members at times to go back and get other coursework. So, we've just asked a math teacher at the high school, because remember when they teach college level, they are governed under what's called the HLC, the Higher Learning Council, and they either have to have eighteen hours above their masters. So, say a teacher has a master's in administration, and they're teaching math, well, they need to go get eighteen hours in math, or have a master's in that content. And so, I think I'll get that one, and the other, yes, was the career technical. Part of it, I put this advisor, a real-world application person, and also it was to update our food service, our, you know, our welding. We heard from, when Jim was here in shade, that our welders, our welding machines are old and don't have the variety of welding that they want, so yeah, it'll be early this fall that I hope we get that one.
So, still on page four, staff development, and we're working to start this school year to have an expert come in on special education, just to make sure, it's probably been a while, just to refresh, like, what teacher roles are, how to support special education teachers, also having enough training for both, so everyone knows how we can support each other, unify a little bit better, and then making sure we get additional curriculum. Because as we change curriculum, we have teachers that teach every subject, because they have those kids in their classrooms, so we need to make sure we have those extra sets and training for them to understand the curriculum pieces that we're giving. So, I'll put to page five.
Well, real quick on those facility needs, and they're definitely, and the notes, if you read there, so, you know, flat roofs are very tricky, sometimes pitched roofs are tricky. So, at the high school, primarily, we have two issues that, I mean, we've had roofing company after roofing, roofing company come out. So, one is in what's called Main Street, so the main hallway, that goes up to provide natural light, and we have coaxed to death those windows and weeples, and we still continue to have, so that potentially is not even a roof issue. And then down in the main gym, so actually like where the stage was for graduation, we continue to have a leak there, and actually, the floor is compromised. If you go in there today, we take up the trim, the baseboard, we try to get fans underneath there, we have forty-five pound weights on it. Now, we will have the company from Hayes come in in late of July to refinish it, but what happens to gym wood floors, it's wood. And so, if you know, when wood gets wet, it warps and it gets, it expands, just like your wood deck, and so, there, just like I said, you would have seen in the graduation, because the stage was on top of it, but the gym floor is up probably about, in fact, I checked it, Coach Doyle was in there doing his camp. And so, we have it coned off, if you have a kid or grandkid in the basketball camps, they happen to go around that. I hope it'll settle down after it dries, but that's what, you truly have to get air underneath there, dry that gym floor out, and then hopefully it settles back down. If not, we'll have to cut it out.
I think you've shown us that on the building too.
Yes, and that was one spot, and now we have another. What happens is, is during the week, if it rains, it's fine, but if it rains on Friday night, two or three inches, or on extended weekends. But if it rains on Friday night, two or three inches, or on an extended weekend, it comes down that. But it comes down the upper wall, the basading, it goes across the walking path and then goes, and then falls down. And so we've actually now, in fact, Doug sent an email today that I saw that Hollis Miller. So we've had some structural architects, structural engineers come out. So it might be some brick tuck pointing as well, so it's very complicated. But I did, I mean, I appreciate you and your team putting that on there. The other is bus drivers, of course, as you guys know, I drive, so as Amy said, it's not the amount of buses or routes. But when we are hot and heavy with activities, the worst is the season we just finished. Middle school going everywhere, high school's going everywhere, and it's just not us. When we play De Soto, we play Spring Hill. I mean, they'll drop kids off at Louis Young at one thirty-four, four-thirty game, so they can get back and do buses. So it is every league school, or they'll call Ty or, and say, hey, can we drop our kids off at two o'clock, so we can get back? And so what we're trying to do to be creative on that, and, and actually I appreciate, you know, it was Ty and some of the coaches' ideas. Is so Cindy Conrad and I met with some coaches. If they're willing to drive, we'll put them through the training to get the CDO, and then we would pay them as well. So hopefully we have some takers on that. We had about six or eight show up from the middle school and high school. That would help as well. So we have plenty of buses. But, and our routes, the activities that's referenced there. And we don't want to pull kids out. I mean, if we're going to Yudora, and that's one reason I drive. If, if not, we're pulling kids out at twelve-thirty, just so they can get to Yudora or Tongi or our northern districts. Get back by three o'clock for route time, and then they go back. So usually I do deadhead, I mean, I take them to Ottawa and then I come back, and then the route driver after they're finished goes back. But that continues to be a struggle. So we'll soon get the bus. I think Cindy Conrad has been on vacation, but we'll get that bus, that middle school parking lot. As you've seen, our wages for bus drivers, I mean, is about the highest around, but everyone's struggling on that.
I think the hard part is not only the wages, but we bust kids out for baseball and softball after school. And we have to do that before routes, so our kids at home events miss the end of the day. So in the spring, especially adding six games to those schedules, they remember in class afternoon, home, away. It was every other day it was game, or every three days a week we had games, so those kids must be tired of school.
For sure. Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up, so I'll point that out. Thank you.
Next page on page five talks a little bit about education. And we did talk about that at site council and all the different opportunities. Things that parents need. I think sometimes people are interested, they come to us mostly knowing how to use our systems like Skyward. But maybe continuing training with parents is something that we could do better. On page seven. We are super excited about attendance, really excited. It's been a long, long, last couple of years, so it's something definitely we're proud of with the kids. Some of these other pieces, we were just finishing some of those reports, so that they're not uploaded to the state yet. So I think it'll be nice, hopefully we'll be able to go back and update this, so you can see that. And we did talk today about graduation rate, dropout rate. So one of the things that did come up, we talked about that at our admin league meeting, is when our kids come into the district as homeschool student at the high school, so they're actually a high school student, then they need to be a homeschool student. If they don't leave and attach to another school, they become a dropout for us. So we might see that dropout rate, like, my goodness, I can't believe we have that many kids. But some of that would be those kids that really they don't ever leave and attend another school, but they might do a homeschool situation. So everybody's experiencing that, because that seems to be a little more trendy right now, because they're staying home just a little bit more. But they may start in our system, and that's where we need to call.
And just as a reminder, graduation rates, so when we all went to school, graduation rate meant, how many kids started? Would any of us in our senior class in August, and how many finished in May? So if you had a hundred in August and ninety-seven graduated, your graduation rate was ninety-seven percent. That's how the state did it forever. That's no longer how it is. They changed that a few years ago. Now it's how many kids enter as a freshman, and how many of those freshmen graduate in four years? As long as, where Amy's alluded to, the homeschool, we can't, they can't track them. Because if a kid starts here as a freshman and graduates from Blue Valley Southwest as a senior in four years, that kid, because they were here as a freshman, count on our graduation. And there's a four-year and a five-year cohort, so there's a different number. So if there's kids that didn't finish in four, but they went through edgenuity or some credit recovery and finished in five. So usually your five-year cohort's gonna be a little higher, because it, and then after, if you didn't finish in five years, they're all considered dropout. So but there's loopholes in that system. With the homeschool, they leave the state of Kansas, so if a kid is freshman, but they speak in Florida, they're not being tracked. So private schools, yes, as long as they're accredited. So if a kid starts freshman and they go to Aquinas, they, we would, they would be tracked the same way. And vice versa, if a kid moves here as a sophomore from Blue Valley, whatever Blue Valley school they started as a freshman, that kid's eventually gonna count on theirs, because they all have identified numbers that, that's safe tracks.
I think we visited a little bit about some of those other things. Last page in that, page eight, we continue just to desire updated furniture, things that are really enjoyable. We've got big stuff going on, I feel like with the school, it's a hot mess, we've got flooring going down, anything going on. So our building is beautiful at all times, so we're not complaining that we don't have all of it at once. So as we continue to grow, we'll keep working on furniture needs. Just, you get into other high schools, I think it's really important that you look around and go to places and peek around and then all of this stuff. So you can kind of see the things that are out there. Baldwin just did a great renovation, they took out all of their locker bays, and it made these multi-use huge spaces. And it's like a wow factor. It's new, it's colorful, it's bright, glass rooms. And they're common, it's just fabulous. So there's something things going on even in older schools.
She doesn't have lockers at all?
No. And this year, we're not gonna switch lock, lock combinations. Our kids are kind of using lockers, they just don't. So we transition kids around Main Street and kids use them and put magnets on them, but we clean lockers out.
So I can attest as a parent, Kyler, as I asked him about, you know, did you clean your locker? He said, Dad, I don't even know where my locker is. I didn't use it one time this year. Rob Bryce says, same with Brock. So with a Chromebook in their backpack, that's what those kids are. And I wish he'd wear a coat when it's twenty below, but he doesn't. And if he gets sick, it's his own fault, because he wears shorts and a T-shirt like it is today, but that's.
A lot of schools have those locker areas, you know, and they're taking those out, or they're just on the walls, so we don't gain space by losing them. But kids don't lose anything.
But I'm glad on the furniture, so that was part of the walkthrough. Amy showed us Jordan Rockmore's class, also we have one oh eight, which is that big one that, where a lot of signings are and stuff. And so Amy has sent me a quote, I, I asked her, so she, so it's kind of waiting in my, can I pay for this inbox? And so, but I think your wish would be all English classrooms, or what, I don't know where you were. So if I'm able to do that.
I don't remember if it was a hundred or two hundred, so we just kind of see where we can. We started in English hallway, so everyone else is jealous of those desks.
And of course, we've updated the commons furniture, you probably saw that at graduation, so that looks nice. So we're chipping away at that building, new furniture. The newest, that, any of that would be, is obviously in that building, it was built twenty-two years ago. But some of that actually came over from the middle school as well, so.
Some of it looks familiar when they graduated.
Exactly, chairs are definitely.
And we try to weld them after a while, they won't hold a weld, so.
So just that, just that final page, I think we've gone over all of those things, just that social emotional piece, additional staffing. So we, as far as academics, you know, we, we aim to be better, everyone wants to get better. In that small bubble of time, we hope to continue to grow kids and keep getting, keep getting on that.
I know that's a lot, what I'll do, I took a lot of notes. Is then we'll discuss, I'll try to fill out like the blank page you have with, and then bring it to you. Once again, as discussion item for the July meeting, see if you feel like I missed something, additional support. We'll do the same in August. You know, obviously we have a budget tearing, a budget setting process. But sometime in September, just like you say, on the one that we review, that will be one that we'll do, uh, review. So if there's other things that you think of, or, or before the July, I don't know, but I'll try to have a draft form put in place based off those conversations.
Do you think, well, they have the final numbers on the assessments, but I.
Do you think, or will they say those will be finalized?
We'll get them through, once we see them in A-Moss, we'll feel fairly comfortable that they're finalized.
But he was asking, like, July, I mean, you know, you're.
Usually it's during the summer, but again, it goes through the state department, or the Department of Ed in the fall.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, four point four, solar energy systems.
Brock, you're almost up, but it's good effect rate. So, so, and I do have a new handout. Jenny did put that, the solar energy system in there. But the gentleman that Pat and I met with, Katie was able to give him current averagey numbers. And so it's, it's gonna lift, you were able to pull open those resources or those tabs that Jenny has there. They look, what you're seeing here from the PowerPoint to the analysis is very similar. But I wanted to give you a pretty current thing. So, but to backtrack a little bit, so the only document you don't have, I think it's probably four point four C, was Pat had asked for the state contract. And so, yeah, so there, so, you know, seven service centers in Kansas. Green Bush is one we probably work with the most. And so just like cooperating purchasing agreements, so you know, buying a car or whatever, there are state contracts. And that is a very vetted process. And so this vendor that we'll discuss has, has now this four-page Green Bush state contract. That allows them to, to do this process. So about two months ago, Green Bush sent out that there's been federal regulation changes with regarding solar. In twenty-twenty-two, they were passed. As we know, the federal government sometimes works slowly. So it was actually just recently in early twenty-twenty-four, so March or April this year, the regs kind of got going with the law. And what has changed is, in the past, whether you're home or your business and you wanted to put up solar, you were able to do so when you've got tax incentives. Public entities, so schools, cities, counties, libraries, you name it, weren't able to do that. Well, there's new federal legislation now allows tax schools and others that are, don't pay taxes, able to get ahold of this. And so what you see at the bottom, I guess on that first page, is a total project cost. So if we were to put solar on our, on our buildings, be a total project cost of four million dollars. Then now the tax incentive, that ITC, we would get one point six million dollars of that. So the net cost would be two point four. And then they provide school districts that do this, the savings. So the savings where you see that MPV, NPV, we would get two point five million dollars. Now, it'd be up to the board to do whatever with that money. You can actually get that upfront, you can get it over time. So if, if this would be an option that the board would be looking at, that money could be used for other capital projects, to lower the mill rate, you know, whatever the board would decide on that as well. As far as solar, solar panels have a thirty-year warranty, excuse me, twenty-five-year warranty. Solar panels have a life expectancy of thirty years. Every year they lose about point five. So I mean, after thirty years, they're still functioning at eighty-five percent. The solar that they're putting on buildings is not, we just talked about flat roofs. So you want to really avoid penetrating flat roofs as best you can. So these are not penetrating the flat roofs, they would be ballast like to the sides and coming across as well. But you can see the reduction there. So at Broadmoor, they had roughly two hundred and fifty kilowatts, it would reduce Broadmoor by forty-four percent. The high school was one that this Vince that met with us, he was saying, so we could do battery backups. And so he, that's what that two hundred, two twenty is on there, that if the board chose to do ba, battery backups. Because how averagey works, or any electric company, you really gotta be careful what's called your demand charges. And kudos to Mike Clevenger before he left, and obviously the district spent a lot of money on computerized monitoring systems. Is, and it's just like at home, where sometimes people think they're saving money by like, at nighttime, you either lower or raise your heat, depending on the year, and in the morning, when you wake up, you raise it. If you're not careful, you're actually costing yourself more money, because averagey's gonna look at your residents and say, that's your demand charge. And so in schools, we, same way, we don't want to lower our temps and then at six in the morning, just light our entire building up. So what our buildings do, they slowly creep alive, based off staff and students that come in. So our first thing that starts either warming or cooling, depending on the season, are kitchens. Cooks are gonna be there first cooking breakfast. Then maybe our gym and our weight room, then our office. Actually, the last thing that starts being, having the right temperature would be our classrooms as well. So we've really tried to avoid that demand charge as well. On the second page, then in the PowerPoint two, you can, it's guaranteed maximum pricing. There's no, there's never any out-of-pocket expenses to the district, whether moving forward with it or, or even during it. In fact, in the PowerPoint, it, it shows kind of the steps, and it shows that never are there any costs associated. And that would be on this Green Bush engagement process, you can see. So the district, even though you see four million dollars, and you know, these are still rough estimates. If the board would choose to continue this, they would obviously get deeper into the weeds and provide us a lot more analytics than you see here as well. I, I wanted Pat to be involved, I mean, obviously all board members need to be involved in a process like this. But with Pat's experience with the Kansas Corporation Commission, that dealt with similar things like this, and obviously as a, as an electrician, I don't know much about, you know, this. And so, like I said, Pat and I met last week. It's still very early in the process, but I guess, Pat, I should turn it over to you. What other thoughts or things you want to share with the board?
It takes a special contract to have a performance contract where you just have one entity providing services to a government agency like this. And the new information we have is that the total cost of project is a little over four million dollars. The investment tax credits. So the total cost of the project and investment tax credit from the federal government is that, they'd effectively write you a check. We have to have a, a return in tax return, which schools don't do, but for this we would. If we do this, then it's thirty percent of what the total cost is. Now, if it's American-made, you get another ten percent, so it'd be forty percent of the cost. And so the value of this investment tax credits, and I think they figured the forty percent, one point six million dollars. So the project net cost after ITC and investment tax credit is two point four million dollars. So with that, using tax credits to buy that down, it's a nine point eight-year return. So that, you know, that's out of, out of ways. The thing that, so there's a program, Facility Conservation Improvement Plan Program, FCIP. That's, it's kind of nationwide, that they've, they have passed that in most states. So that you can take a company, they're, if they're registered in the state of Kansas, or called ESCOs, Energy Savings, something, something. And so that they're regulated by what their state contract is, or what the state contract is. They have to be signatory to it. or what the state contract is. They have to be signatory to it and selected to be an ESCO. So the energy ops, the KCC, uh, administers that. Two thousand fourteen, I went on to KCC and what we found, we had, there's an energy, uh, office that was basically approving whatever came through the door, cause they got a percentage of that. That's how they were funded. Their funding was totally from getting a percentage of the FCIP projects. So that was revamped, um, to where it would give some benefit to the customer, gives, you know, have standards for the, companies that are ESCOs and participating in that. And that would give, you know, once you're done, how do you track that? It's really difficult, you know, because you don't just look at the dollars, uh, since power bills are always going up. And, um, so if you don't have things in place to analyze what's happening, it's hard to see what kind of a benefit you get. So, um, not a big fan of that CIP, um, process. Uh, sometimes I think that they take what you're looking at and instead of saying, okay, this is what it costs based upon this percentage markup. Yes, they back into what they're charging by how long it takes to pay for it. And where if you could get a project that would pay for itself in six to seven years, then you get one that they're gonna be saying, okay, it's gonna cost this much and it's gonna take eight or nine years. And you really don't have any way to judge that when you single source like this. And as a contractor for years, not only do you look at the dollar amount, you look at what you get. And how it's installed. They wanna use their own engineer. They wanna use their own accountant. I think that, um, I'm not in favor of doing this with this group. Um, I think they got a state contract that circumvented having to do it through the FCI process, FCIP process that's in state law. I'm not against solar. I think anything you can do to, you know, shade your, uh, peak demand is very helpful. I'd like to see us take a look at, um, normal, uh, ways of doing this. That we would hire engineers to take a look at it and, you know, represent us and re- represent the school district's interests. I think you'd get a, um, I think you'd get a better project. And then once we found out, yes, we do want to do this, our engineers are saying it's gonna make sense for us. We could go through that CIP pro- process and, uh, see what we're gonna get. And I'm really concerned about having this much solar on our roofs. You know, if you have problems and you have, it, this is a lot of solar. And so every time you need to change or, you know, fix a roof or put a new one on, you know, what do you do with the equipment that's up there? And, um, the other thing that has really stuck in my mind, um, our church put, uh, metal siding on, lab siding years ago, and they said it was, um, lifetime guarantee. Well, some of the started losing some paint on it. And, uh, so we went and talked to them. It was like five years after it was installed. And they said, um, it was like seven or eight years, but, um, they said, yeah, it's lifetime guarantee. For the first five years, it's a hundred percent. Then you lose twenty percent a year after that. So when you get to ten years, you don't have a guarantee. They're not gonna help you pay for it at all. So, but that's what they were touting is a lifetime guarantee. So, that's my thoughts on it. Um, I, to single source a four million dollar project now when we have, you know, about as high of interest rates as we had a long time. It. I, I think it's just a risky road to go down.
Wouldn't this also require additional insurance? Uh, I saw during the storms where some people, some building had a lot of solar and it, the hail busted it all.
There's already insurance. Well, and, uh, we asked them that at our meeting, uh, and these, and we, I asked them engineering fees, structural, uh, insurance. All that is, I mean, according to them, it was all factored in here.
But I heard the, I heard the op that it was not.
That's, I'll say, okay, I'm glad I took you, cause I thought that I, okay. Uh, and I did visit with Elliot's about that. In fact, Joe was quickly looking up, uh, you know, potentially how much that would be.
Yeah, I mean, cause you would, we would have to insure the, the panel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we. I thought some, some company somewhere that happened to them and they were all destroyed. And I thought, wow, that's a big cost.
Our ever G bill right now, so, or whatever that show, about fifteen hundred kilowatts or whatever, uh, is about five hundred thousand dollars a year. What we pay ever G, give or take. Uh, and so you can see their percentage savings. And so that's really over thirty years, how, so if they're gonna take our five hundred thousand dollar bill down to two fifty, but then we know energy rates are gonna continue to go up every year, they have factored that in and that's part of that guaranteed maximum price. I asked what they use. They said escalation prices of like two or three percent. I thought that was low, cause if ever G needs to build a new smoke stack or stuff, they could jack that up. But they actually said, if that's the case, it actually helps. So it is good for they go low, cause if it's five percent or six percent energy savings, you're gonna actually see a bigger return on that, uh, as well. And I'm not saying, I mean, I just wanted to bring this to you. Uh, if it's something like Pat's saying, we still wanna explore, uh, off, also you can do solar fields. I personally see nowhere we do a solar field at the high school, the middle school of Broadmore. We could put a solar field right here in the north side of Circle Grove, uh, even though this is city property, uh, it's out in the country. Potentially put a solar field on the north side of Rockville, uh, you know, property to the hedge row. I, I don't know what the city would say more of that's being in town. But I know, you know, even Pat maybe said, you know, do we try it with one building? So whether it's this built, so, and then just wrap, you know, based off square foot feet. So this is an eighteen thousand square foot building, but if it works here and you could probably say it's gonna be the same at two hundred and twelve thousand high school. So I work with, you know, do it ourselves, um, through that process that he, he mentioned as well. So. Probably, I mean, nothing else. I just wanted to share that, uh, yeah, this was just legislation that was passed. Uh, a lot of people never think that school districts or cities could, or, you know, could get tax credits. But this is passed in two thousand and twenty-two bipartisan at the feds. They have funding, uh, through twenty thirty-two, uh, secured. But like even if you jump in next year or two years, you know, then you don't even have to worry about way running out of money because you would get to us all upfront. So.
I think, I think it's a great exercise to go through. I think I'd be, you know, I think we should pursue it, but it's not there.
Yeah. Oh, so I guess just looking at these numbers. So it's four million dollar cost. We get a one point six million dollar rebate. Takes it down to two point four. And that's basically ever G pays for that?
Not ever G, or finance companies. It's almost like, like a bond, uh, they mentioned. So we could use one of our local.
But because of savings.
Over thirty years, they're gonna cut us a check. So in this exercise right here, if we did it, they would cut us a check for two point five million and say, use that however.
But, but then we stopped paying on the bond then, or is that paid for?
That's paid through this. Yeah. We don't pay anything. So you don't pay anything upfront. You don't, we don't have to make those payments of two point four. It's all figured into that savings of like thirty.
When, because of the, the solar.
Yes.
And this, like what we're, we're gen- saving on the building or generating, sending back to ever G. So basically we're ahead immediately, two point five million is what you're saying right now, to use towards something else. But what Pat's saying is like.
No, the investment tax credits are one point six.
Uh, but that takes the project, that immediately takes the project.
The way I understand it is, just looking at this, is the two point five is what you, they're basically paying you what.
The difference.
The difference. But you're not really lowering your electric bill, right? You're just getting that money, correct?
No, we'd be lowering our bill by, you can see those percentage, according to this exercise, Broadmore by forty-four percent, the high school by.
So you also get to lower, you're also lowering your utility bill on top of this.
See, I, I feel like our utility bill is gonna still be five hundred K, but they're paying for the two point five million over that time, right? And then they pay us the difference of two point five, four million. We get the difference upfront, but.
The way I understand this is that there's four million dollars is the cost for doing this. We have to go get financing somewhere. It is a loan that we take out.
So we'll have a two point four million dollar loan, cause the rebate, right?
The two point four, yeah.
As soon as we have the rebate.
And we have to pay it off in the one to ten years, right?
Yeah, so total project cost is four million dollars. Then investment tax credits, if you get the extra ten percent for American-made, have to be certified as American-made, that's difficult to do with, you don't know where the parts come from that you buy. So let's say we get to forty percent, that's gonna be, we have to file taxes. Okay? So then that's gonna come from the federal government at some point in time. So I don't know if we have to borrow the full four million, then payback, then use that. If we took the investment tax credits and did something else with that, I'm guessing we're gonna run this out to about fifteen years, the payback. So this is paid for by this, what you were paying for your electric, to what you now pay. That delta in there is what you use to pay off that loan.
Yeah, so our. But then the, but then the NPV at five percent, they're still saying there's another two point five million that they're sliding over to you because this is what you're gonna save over thirty.
That's what, that's what the project costs. That's paying for the solar panels, installation.
But the two point five is what they're gonna write this check for?
No.
Yeah.
That's what they, that's, cause the two point four would be the net cost, the project net cost, that third number down.
So what's the NPV at five percent? Sorry.
That's what I heard that they would provide the district. Cause actually you can see in the PowerPoint on this project metrics, you see capitalized dollars available for future projects. So that money would be provided to the district to use as the board's. Because over thirty years, you know, so if you take five hundred thousand dollars down to half of it, two fifty, but then they factored in those escalating, uh, prices, you know, that's a lot of money over thirty years that then. With the net solar cost plus the, you know, the NPV, so really that's five million dollars. So they're gonna take two point four to pay it off and give the district two point five million dollars.
So we get a loan for two point four? Is that correct?
But it's paid off through the, the savings.
Sure, but we still get the loan for that. Or do we, we don't?
Yeah, I don't wanna say anything that I was unclear on. Um, I don't think it's like our loan and our, like a bond issue. It's somehow being financed through, you know, these, these companies. You know, and like I said, it's first read. I, I can have whether this company or Green Bush or, uh, we can have someone else. The biggest thing is, is whether we do it ourselves, another way or this one, you know, there are now these huge incentives available to school districts that we used to not.
It's good information.
So this is the, the group that has basically state contract right now, right? So these are, which is all set up. And what you're saying is you don't like it because it's a single source. So we need to, it'd be best if we took this concept and maybe did it.
We did it ourselves.
Basically like, hey, bring in our own engineers, look at it, what's the best, you know? Obviously, if we see all these savings that are somewhere that they can source it, but I also think we wanna see what. We're gonna second the cost future, like if we have to put a new roof on a building.
Right. We have that presentation here with.
Hundred eighty.
We could ask all the.
Kilowatts.
Absolutely.
Solar.
Yeah.
So GRP Wegman, or they're not a Kansas company. They're out of Saint Louis, so they, uh, they specialize on this type of thing in other states. Uh, so they're trying to obviously get into the Kansas market, the PC area market as well. So. No, I had to find, I mean, the goal was more, I mean, obviously, um, cause I hadn't even heard about this till, like I said, about two months ago. And was intrigued initially by looking at it, uh, and I, I mean, it does look too good to be true that there's never any out-of-pocket cost. And they're also gonna give us a check for two point five million. Um, but.
There you go. There's a page, there's a page later. It says business as usual versus future like electricity bill. So it's gonna show where our act- actually electricity bill is compared to over a thirty year. And those are available funds. You guys hear that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I guess, um, just leaving some direct.
Yeah, on the second page, it says the NPV represents capitalized funds that can be allocated in future, future projects.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I mean, it's something worth, worth looking at. I mean, there's a, there, there's could be an opportunity here for us to take advantage of this. The, you know, put it towards some capital improvements, lower the mill rate, you know, whatever. But I mean, I think it's worth looking into, whether it's with this company or as Pat says, doing it on our own.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know. Maybe, maybe you reach out to.
Paul's Miller?
Yeah, Paul's and Miller and see if they've done anything like this.
If they've heard about it and, yeah. I can definitely do that.
Actually, that's not gonna hurt anything.
No. And obviously even if we were moving forward, this, you're talking early this next summer. And so time is on our side. Supposedly the funding is on our side. We have till twenty thirty-two is what they shared. So. And as soon as you sign up, it's not like, you know, you have to worry about funding running out when your loan's still in place. Cause according to them, you got this incentive upfront. So, uh, we definitely have the time. But, uh, and I think if we go on roofs, uh, now, obviously we put on new roofs at the high school, Broadmore here and the middle school, Rockville, that was original roof, uh, so that, you know, oh eight, so that's a sixteen-year-old roof. So. Cause Pat's right. I mean, if you have repairs or, or tear off, you're taking that solar off, uh, before, I mean, that's the only way you're repairing that roof. So there would be a cost to that. Uh, so ideally it'd be, but you know, put it on other roofs. They did, I thought maybe, you know, so take Broadmore High School, can we just like totally put it all in one building and like transfer power? And they said, you know, no. So we, you know, then we could send power through the grid to the middle school and others. I don't know enough about electricity, but it sounded like it was per address at per meter. And so, you know, they, that, so Katie and I sent them these, you know, they still like, like, I, I assume these offsite, if you look on page one. I mean, obviously we have those sheds to the west of Broadmore. They still say virtual program, but I, I don't know. I'd have to look at those addresses that those are in the top five or no brainers. Um, but I don't know where that, exactly that one eighty-five kilowatts is coming from or even that hundred on the last. Um, so, or do you know Katie? That's fine.
If you tell me that, I'll just like.
Yeah, well, he doesn't have one here either. So I, I, but, so obviously, I mean, you can see right there in the, I mean, the high school, you can see is our big electric. I mean, five hundred and twenty-five kilowatts. So it's a third of our entire kilowatts. That's the biggest building and it's alive the most. So, um, but then the other three. So, but then the other three. I think that Broadmore one will change, so, and Katie actually, they're looking at it more updated than you are. So obviously, if you're looking at she, Broadmore showing two fifty where the middle school and Rockville are exactly the same, those three buildings are about the same size and square feet, about ninety thousand square feet. Broadmore used to be all electric, so I assume that number will now start reflecting more like the middle school in Rockville. It used to be naturally higher, we're trying to keep that building with electricity. Well, I have enough to move forward and, and I just like said for discussion and I appreciate the influence, especially Jake, Pat's expertise and, you know, leading me with this group.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, moving on to action items, five point one, approval of the property and liability and workers' comp insurance renewal.
Okay, appreciate Brock hanging with us, hopefully learning a thing or two. What I mostly learned is he doesn't wanna be a board member, I don't know. But he's no longer on the LRC. But every year this time, we work with property and liability and workers' comp renewal. We've been with Elliot's as a partner for a long time, obviously we got great partners with this and great supporters of the community. I'll tell you before we turn over to Brock. Property insurance is, is out of control and even Joe Aaron and Brock will tell you that and they're in it every day. You know that as you're trying to insure your cars, your house, if you have property. I'll give you a few examples, so in seventeen and eighteen. So the year seventeen eighteen, our premium was seventy-three thousand two seventy-four, seventy-three thousand two seventy-four. That insured almost a hundred and eighteen million dollars of property. So our premium was seventy-three thousand to ensure a hundred and eighteen million dollars of property in seventeen eighteen. Now, the premium that Brock's gonna show you tonight is two hundred and twelve thousand five sixty-eight. And our property has only increased to about a hundred and sixty million. So to do the percentages, since seventeen and eighteen, our premium to insure us has went up about three hundred percent. Or our value of our property is only up thirty-five percent. So that data point just shows you what I said, that property, and it's no different if you would go back seventeen eighteen, what you were paying for your car insurance or your home. And now we're worth a hundred and sixty million versus your home's worth, you know, five hundred thousand, four hundred thousand, whatever the case may be. So we, we've tried to do many things, last year the board chose to go from a five, a fifty thousand dollar deductible to a seventy-five thousand dollar deductible. So that's still where Brock's gonna show you on that. There's been a big change and he'll discuss on Wind Hill, which is the big driver on property. Elliot's did try to go out and broker some others, one, if you, I don't know if you ever heard of an insurance company called Chubb. But how I came across them and visited with another broker in the pool plan. They said that Piper has Chubb, well Piper's our size a little bit bigger, so I reached out to them. And so did Elliot's, because we actually heard pretty good things from Piper that they are like Chubb Insurance and things like that. But Chubb would only write us up to a hundred million. Well, I already told you in seventeen eighteen, we were over a hundred million and now we're about a hundred fifty, eight, hundred and sixty million. So that was out. Right Specialty, which years ago, and Elliot's hated losers for that couple of years, but CBiz did broker Wright. Wright was in Kansas, they offered a pretty good plan, in fact, I remember Brock's dad standing there and saying he doesn't lose, loses, but it was a good plan and so. And, you know, so we did leave Elliot's for a couple of years, but now we're back with them. But now Wright has left Kansas, they don't want in the property, they would do the other plans, but not the big one, the property. We did bid the pool, the KSB State Pool, brokered by CBiz. Without workers' comp, so really our only option is them, or the one presented tonight. Is four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars without workers' comp. So our number is high, but they're not close to four thirty-three. And there is not gonna be a dividend check, EMC sometimes provides a dividend check, but across Kansas there was some unhealthy areas, so that eats into that state dividend check. And then last, and I'll turn over to Brock, but, and he had already beat me to it because. I always ask our brokers, hey, just because, and I do that with IMA on our health side, just because we're becoming unhealthy, you know, your commission needs to maybe come down because. And you already beat me to that, because when I asked him that last week, they had lowered their commission. I mean, obviously they're gonna make more than they need to, that's a business model you have to be, but they've lowered that percentage as our rates have went up, so. Little background, you take it away, sir.
That was, that was pretty good, you, you hit my hat.
All right.
The entire industry is, is on fire, it's, it's a bad place to be right now, from property. Thirty-two separate billion-dollar weather events last year. From liability, we live in a terrible, tedious environment. The only line of business today that's making money is workers' compensation, you can kinda see that when we get into it a little bit. Any questions on any of that before I jump into it? So a report came out today, just looked at it while I was sitting back here. Combined loss ratio so far this year, property and casualty is ninety-six percent. So for every dollar they're taking in, they're making four percent right now, which is a major improvement over last year and a much better improvement over the year before that. So these drastic rate increases that we've been seeing, these deductible changes, they seem to be having the desire effect. Two years ago it was a hundred and eighteen percent, so combined loss ratio is claims paid out plus the insurance company expense. Every dollar they were taking in, they're paying it out a dollar eighteen, so we're getting better. That just goes to show you that the changes they're making are necessary and hopefully we're, we're on a better path. Take you through this presentation quickly, any questions in the meantime, just holler them out. Our big ticket item is the property, we'll spend a lot of time on that, everything else we'll go through pretty quickly. Our first part is our general liability, we have a two-man aggregate with one million currents, there are no changes here. This means that we could pay up to two one million dollar claims in a policy period without getting into our umbrella, which we'll talk about later. Property, here we go. Hundred and forty-six million last year, closing in on a hundred and sixty this year. A hundred and sixty is our total value of real property, our buildings, our personal property, our outdoor property. That is ninety percent of what it would cost to replace everything we have, we made that change last year to save a little bit of premium, just point that out.
That's a nine percent increase in case you're curious.
Nine percent overall. This is on a blanket coverage form, so if you see a value, you go down here and you say the building at one oh five South Fifth, we've got twenty-five million dollars on it. If we lose that building, it actually costs thirty million, they're gonna pay you that thirty million. You have up to the hundred and fifty-eight million for any one loss. The only issue we could ever run into is if we lost everything at one time, given our geographic spread, that seems unlikely and that's kinda why we made that decision.
And, you know, even I questioned that a couple of years, so that's Broadmore obviously, and if Broadmore ninety thousand, if we had to build a ninety thousand square foot elementary, it would cost us probably forty million. But if a tornado hits Broadmore Elementary, you don't have to start from scratch, the utilities are there, the concrete's there, the parking lot's there, so. You know, you really gotta rebuild up, but, so, cause I questioned that a few, like I was worried years ago, like telling Brock and Rick and Joe Aaron, like I don't know if like we could rebuild that building for that, but. You know, there would be some things that we would not have to re, you know, instead of this, like when the high school was built, that was an alfalfa field as you guys know, so there was a lot more infrastructure there. Than that, and then you wanna talk about, before we leave out the right side, the deductibles and the changes there?
So the change that we've got this year, two years ago, we were at a fifty thousand dollar occurrence deductible. So if we have four buildings hit, same occurrence, we have one fifty thousand dollar. Sorry, one fifty thousand dollars deductible. Last year, we increased that to seventy-five thousand dollars, saved a decent amount of premium to do that. This year EMC has made some major changes and this has been going on for over the better part of eight months. So in November of last year, we had a Zoom call with EMC and they said, hey, we're making big changes, we're gonna require a one percent Wind Hill deductible on all these buildings. One percent of your building value, total, total blanket value. And that was gonna be per building.
So if you look at Broadmore, instead of a seventy-five thousand, to get Broadmore fixed, it would cost us two hundred and fifty thousand, one percent of twenty-five.
So that happened in November, January one comes, they have some changes go on. They've listened to us for the most part, they lost some business out of it and they decided, okay, we, we can't do this and remain competitive. So they've changed it, they've allowed us to go to a seventy-five thousand per location deductible. So given that giant catastrophic storm that we're talking about. Every location that we have gets hit, maximum amount of pocket would be three hundred and fifty thousand.
So seventy-five times five.
Big change from the past.
Or three seventy.
Three seventy.
Three seventy-five, sorry.
And so it is by address, so four of them makes sense, but I, and Elliot's told me, so like, if you look at Broadmore. The two buildings, the two sheds on the west side, Broadmore, the soccer stadium and football stadium. That is actually considered one location, so that, anything that got hit right there would be the seventy-five. So it isn't by building, and Rick corrected me in the email, I said that it is by, so really you have five addresses here and the other four that we are insuring to get that three seventy-five. We could do what's called, I don't know what it's called, deductible insurance.
Buyback.
Buyback, so we could go to the secondary market and, and so if that happens, we'd still have to pay seventy-five thousand. But this company would really pay that other three hundred thousand, in the catastrophic, all five of our buildings are hit. Joe Aaron shared with me that they got that, that's thirty thousand dollars to do that. It would not be my recommendation to do that, but, so really you're. Seven thirty thousand to, so you only, so you're really two hundred and seventy thousand dollars of difference on that one. But even CBiz, I'll tell you, when I talked to Tom O'Viere after this, he said, don't do that. So, and I guess you guys would advise probably not to do that.
I would probably not, but I always wanted to give you any option that we can.
I do have a question, is, do most people do a blanket coverage of pretty much dollar for dollar? I know you said we did dropped it, or didn't go the full amount.
Yeah, that's ninety percent, so we're actually.
I mean, does that make sense to, I mean, the odds of, I mean, losing, if we lost all the buildings. I mean, realistically, we wouldn't be building back all these schools because there would be no houses. You know what I'm saying, like, like, just to think like, you know, what our needs would be, so I'm just curious, like, is that?
We're limited on the flexibility with the carrier.
I mean, just curious, like, does that make sense to go that high?
So.
Because it doesn't even make a big difference.
They, they've changed their stance on that as well, so in our conversations with, with this district and our other districts. If we wouldn't have already been at ninety, they would not allow us to go to ninety now, they won't allow us to go lower.
They won't let us raise our deductible either, right?
Well, they're, they're.
Crazy high, right?
Today, they're, they only have two options that are at this level, you can have a seventy-five thousand per location or you can go to that one percent. They don't have anything filed to go higher than that, we expect that'll change next year.
So next year we're hoping, you know, maybe we could do a hundred thousand dollars more.
And we've got, on your next page, you'll see the option, the premium option to go to one percent. And it, it just, it doesn't make any kind of logical sense, and I would suspect that going to a hundred thousand or even a hundred and fifty probably wouldn't make sense.
Had we had the opportunity to, to look at the eighty percent level, we would have.
Okay, I was just curious, since I'm sitting there.
The way you're saying makes sense, I mean, if ninety percent of our, of our buildings are a hundred percent like that, the community is gone, right? That's what I'm saying, I get what you're saying.
And if, even if that was an option, they do this goofy thing that when you go to a lower percentage, they increase your property rate. So it's not, it wouldn't be like saving ten percent, it would be like saving X percent.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
You do wanna be a little careful, so if you look at a terrible storm that hit a school district, Joplin, Missouri, years ago, that, that was in two thousand and eleven. They did not have enough money to rebuild, they actually got insurance and then had to pass a bond issue, which was very, you know, that, that's community struggle because they had an F-five tornado, but then. That was really tough because then the school district had to ask the community, very tough times that, hey, we don't have enough money. And so we had, they had to actually pass a bond issue as well, so, once again, we're storm and, but that actually did happen in two thousand and eleven at the job, at Joplin, Missouri.
And, and you'll notice from the twenty-four or the twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-five limits, that's about what, an eight to nine percent increase in the value. Which is just, I mean, that's just kind of an inflationary guard that the carrier puts on every year, just based on construction costs.
Any questions there?
Nope.
What other, what other big change we got?
And these pages, like you said, I mean, they're kind of arbitrary numbers, the only time that you would ever worry on any of these buildings listed on these next pages if we're under sure is if it was. We got to that one fifty-eight, so when the high school says, or is that, well, the middle school's twenty-seven million, but the high school. Twenty-two, five, oh, so the high school building four, so they got the high school setting at sixty-two million, yeah, it'd probably cost eighty million dollars now to build that school. So once again, the infrastructure part of it's there, but if the high school for some reason, something happened to it. And you're seeing it says there's sixty-two million five sixty-seven and it's, whatever says it's seventy, as long as we had coverage under that blanket, it would cover that.
Other big changes we've got, another stance that EMC has taken, if we have a roof that's over fifteen years old. They're taking it from replacement cost, which is exactly what it sounds like, that roof is damaged, they're gonna replace it with a new one, to actual cash value. Actual cash value is replacement cost minus the appreciation of that roof. So say this is a fifty-year roof, I think is what we talked about.
Here or where?
This is at Rockville.
Yeah, Rockville.
So we just have, we just have one roof that's going to this, at Rockville, it'll be at actual cash value instead of replacement cost. It's a fifty-year roof, we've got fifteen years on it, I can't do math, the math program wasn't as good when I was.
So it loses like thirty percent.
The depreciation wouldn't be as severe as, as you might think, I mean.
We tried to get an exception made on this, we had EMC come out and inspect it and they said this roof's in fantastic shape, there's nothing wrong with it. They go, okay, great, if it's not, it doesn't look old, why don't we just leave it alone? And they weren't willing to do that, but the point being, at the time of the loss, we'll determine that depreciation.
And we'll have the documentation that, that when they came out in loss control, looked at it, that it was in excellent condition, so, I mean, for what that's worth.
So that's why when you go to Rockville, so under the roofs, it's so, so you see it says SPC, but then right there, building, blow it up.
Yeah, that first.
So right there on the right, see where it says, so that has a different code there on Rockville where it says SPC, where they see the actual cash value. The others did not say that.
So next year our other roofs will, our other buildings will look like that because it won't be brand new roofs.
No. So we're, we're fine on every building except Rockville, and then eventually when that's replaced, but who knows, I mean, but if they continue that, then. But all of our other buildings are only a few years old, so.
And what did you say, Rock?
Sixteen years, it's open in oh eight.
But it's a fifty-year one?
Yeah, it's a thirty-year roof.
Thirty.
Yeah, so it'd even hurt that depreciation more, because now it's. Over a hour and a half, so it would stink. That building, that roof is different too, it's white, all the others are black, but it's called a TPO roof, so actually it, it's not adhered like others. It does blow in the wind, but EMC did walk it. We gave, you know, props that we, so that one, and then actually there's a little one, but the stadium was built at the same time, so there's a little roof up there. Not get really worried about, but we really do have two buildings that have rooms older than the stadium and Rockville.
These are, these are all moving targets, I'm gonna come before you next year and all this is gonna be very, very different. What it's gonna look like, I do not know, it could be much better, it could be much worse, but changes are gonna keep happening.
Great.
Yeah.
Hey, any other questions on property before we move on? All right, with the auto max, there's no real changes here, there is a million dollar limit as well, without getting into our umbrella. We've got a whole list of vehicles there down below, we've reviewed those, I don't think we made any changes, maybe we did.
So the big, just as you see ones and twos, buses are at two, cars are at one, and then trailers, you can see our new little trailer and some others in there, but. Most are Thomas, but you'll see some Chevys and Fords, those are our smaller buses, so, so if it sees, says two, it's a bus, if it's one, it's a trailer or a passenger vehicle.
Had some conversations about raising deductibles here, we looked at that last year. And we kinda get into the point where we're, we're trying to shave the premium out of things that we just can't shave anymore. The bulk of our premiums all in property, and we start saving a couple hundred bucks, a couple thousand dollars. Uh, the bulk of our premiums all in property, and we start saving a couple hundred bucks, a couple thousand dollars here and there, and it just doesn't make a big enough difference to make sense to do it.
What we have been doing so it doesn't hit the books, uh, our few, our little fender benders, uh, we just pay out of pocket. So when a bus, you know, bangs in the car or something and does two thousand dollars worth of damage, we all turn that in. Fifth Street, uh, Ms. February's car, we did turn that into insurance.
Next, we've got our equipment floater, um, tractors, mowers, things of that nature. Um, we've got a total schedule of two hundred and one thousand. Um, we do have some EDP hardware, um, front systems, computers, that type of stuff that's scheduled on there as well. Thousand-dollar deductible on that. Next section, we have a crime, it's our daily bond, uh, state Kansas requires us to carry this, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars, five hundred dollars, drug after lawyer. Um, workers' compensation is next. Told you that this is the only profitable line of insurance today. If you look down there on your right side, you can see that all of our rates are still going down. Three fifty-nine last year to three fifty-six, uh, thirty-seven, thirty-six, two ninety-five to two sixty-six. Every hundred dollars of payroll that's in that class code, you get charged three fifty-six, thirty-six, or two sixty-six. The, when we get to our back page, the workers' compensation premium is gonna be higher than it was last year. Our rates are down. The big piece of this is what's called experience modification factor. They take the last three years of your experience, they put it into a big complicated formula, and it spits out a number. They base that off of one point zero zero. So they take your total comp, multiply that by one point zero zero, and that gets your number. If you have good experience, it goes down. If you have bad experience, it goes up. So this year, we're at a point eight at eight-eight, we're actually at a twelve percent reduction on our workers' compensation costs because we have good experience. Not so long ago, we were in the sixties, sixty-two, sixty-three. Um, nothing in particular. It's, gotta look out for two things. One is severity, and one is frequency. We don't really have either one of those problems.
We've had four claims in three years, and it rolls the previous three, so, so we should get, unless we have new ones. And none of those four were huge. Maybe the highest one was twenty thousand or something. I think they're all closed.
Yes.
Uh, none of them are ongoing, I don't think, so. We've put a lot of things in place to help with that, but obviously, we still have people that get on ladders and walk on wet floors and fall on slick ice, and those are the things we see.
Things happen.
Yeah.
That's why we have workers' compensation.
That's right. Uh, on workers' comp, so the pros, proposal's still with EMC, uh, there's, there are different workers' comps, and we've done different workers' comps in the past. We've done a program called RAZ, R-A-Z, um, there's other ones as well, uh, but it's just like last year's a package deal. Do we get any relief by packaging it?
We do. So EMC gives us a more competitive price on the rest of the package by keeping our compensation there. And we didn't, we didn't put that out to bid this year, a couple of reasons, overall rate decrease, and still trying to get the most competitive on the package, so we just have to leave that alone for this year. Okay, our umbrella that we've been talking about, we do have a five million dollar umbrella. So the biggest, the largest liability claim that we can pay a policy period is six million dollars, one on the underlying, five on umbrella. We get past that million, the next ten thousand dollars would come out of pocket. EMC fix up everything after that, until we exhaust that five million. Professional errors and missions, um, EMC calls this a linebacker. We don't really know what linebacker means, but it just means more than professional. Um, so we're picking up our teachers' professional, we're picking up our, uh, errors and missions, we're picking up, uh, our board liability as well, um, and our employee's practices, our EPLI here. We have two separate cyber policies here. Um, we have the first one that EMC throws in, it's relatively inexpensive. We have a million-dollar limit. It is not a broad policy. It is inexpensive, and it picks up a handful of things pretty easily for us. Last year, we went out to a third market called Cowbill, uh, bought a standalone cyber policy that's on that next page then. Much more robust policy. Um, there is a twenty-five thousand dollar deductible with this. That is one deductible for any one occurrence. So we've got some supplements there, but it's still the dumb twenty-five thousand. Okay, last thing I've got, any comparisons? Overall, um, we're up twenty-two point seven percent over last year. Uh, this isn't gonna make you feel better, but we were really pleased with that. Average that we're seeing today is between twenty-five and thirty percent across just about every industry.
And I guess to put lipstick on a pig, uh, another thing is, and you would love this on your own property, uh, because even though it's a lot, if you take the two hundred and twelve, five sixty-eight, divided by a hundred and sixty million dollars of property roughly, that's thirteen cents. I did that on my house, I mean, at thirteen cents. I, I mean, I'd love that. Uh, so, and then on the average of that, so we're getting our property insured at thirteen cents. What's, the, the average is in the twenties to twenty-two to twenty-five, right?
The.
Or what you're seeing.
From what we're seeing, twenty-five, twenty-five cents is, is pretty average.
And we're at thirteen cents.
Well, it's just an anomaly. I mean, in, in this industry, it's probably, in the school business, it's probably one of the only businesses that, that you're gonna see those kind of property rates. It's just not.
The next, the best thing that we compare it to is industrial, and they're at forty or fifty cents. We, I, I come in front of you every year, and we seem like we talk about the same kind of stuff. It gets more expensive, it gets more expensive, it gets more expensive. And EMC, that thirteen cent rate is, is probably the best in the state, close to it, if not the best. We've got a couple of other districts. Um, their rates are pretty low, and we're beating them handling. Um, if you look at our competition based on the, the proposal that they gave you, it shows that EMC is still doing this for, for as inexpensive as they possibly can.
And with their only quotes, so you see the totals, three twenty-nine, five twenty-eight will be in motion, but to compare the two rates we got, you would have to minus the forty-six, nine thirty-five, which is the workers' comp up there. So if you take out forty-six, nine thirty-five, you would get a total, just called property liability premium, of two eighty-two, five ninety-three. And C-Biz's through the pool was four thirty-three, so about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more, because then, if we would've went that route, we would've still had to go get workers' comp as well.
And you would've been locked in for three years to the pool. Um, and, um, once you're in, there's no, next year, the rates could look even more ridiculous.
And there's no guarantee if something happens there that EMC lets you back in. There's no pool if they would sure you again.
As of right now, EMC stands, yeah, you wouldn't be allowed that.
So twenty-two point seven, uh, as we've discussed budgets and, and shared, you remember I've shared the big kind of general and, and LOB and, and pots of money that we were talking about, raising some things. It is a little higher than I had budgeted. I had budgeted a twenty percent, uh, increase in property casualty. C is twenty-two point seven, so it just says, we're talking each assessment budget, wanted to share that as well. Not really with Brock and, and this, but, uh, health insurance, right now, we met again today, looking at a seventeen point four percent increase. Uh, we budgeted a ten percent increase on that. Dental insurance is gonna be up thirteen percent, would be, but we've negotiated a cap on, uh, Delta Dental for only a seven percent increase. So there's really nothing out there that we're, we're paying for that is, is cheaper, and some of these are absorbent amounts of, of dollars, so. And on the health insurance, we're gonna meet with the teachers, and, uh, I think we can make some plan design changes to make that not quite as high, but. So it is a large number, um, but, and then down below, I mean, we've really talked about those renewal notes and options, uh, if you scroll down a little bit. Our other option, if we don't wanna do the seventy-five thousand per one, is to go to the one percent. But then, so the high school's listed at sixty-two million, so, uh, do you want them to fix anything on the high school? Okay, you have to cut a check for six hundred and twenty thousand dollars versus seventy-five.
I, I think it would be a, a little bit worse than that even. So, I mean, we didn't get down deep into it with them, because we didn't, just didn't think it's gonna be an option. That one percent, we don't know if that would be per location, per building, but either way, if it was per location, and say it was the high school, high school's relatively okay, and if it was the elementary school, we're throwing in the soccer field, football stadium, all of that as well, so.
Okay.
We'll probably close it in on three hundred and seventy-two forty.
And then as we discussed, Chubb, we just, we're, we're work too much, so Chubb potentially works in a district that's, uh, under a hundred million.
So Chubb had a hundred million limit, and they were also requiring one percent, and they, they had no other options, so.
And we know the rate was around twenty, it was over twenty, or over twenty cents, where we're at thirteen.
Then Wright, we had them, uh, for two years, uh, before we went back to EMC and Elliot's, uh, they're not into the property business in Kansas. They still write property in other states, but they got out of Kansas, they seem, like they would tell you it's not, it wasn't profitable.
We've lived high and low, we've, we've begged carriers to, to, hey, don't, don't look at this as a program, look at it from school to school, or even county to county. And the, the rooftop exposure is really what scares everybody, like.
We are still, I mean, it is a work in progress. I mean, our state association, we're trying to come up with ways that we can combat these huge increases going forward. So I mean, it is a constant work in progress, because we know everyone's answer tied with just these two options.
As Dr. Beerman said, EMC has a dividend plan, so if they do have excess premium, they return that to you. We had that happen two years in a twenty-year history. So, uh, it's tough business to make money in. When they do, um, they reward you for it, so. Any questions on any of that stuff?
So the good thing is, we, we almost have budgeted for it. We can weather the additional two point seven percent. That's what you do with any budget, do your best guesstimate. I tried to guesstimate high at twenty percent, but best tell sign is, like I said there, that since seventeen, eighteen, our values have went up thirty-five percent, which isn't bad. I think people would probably gladly that their homes only went thirty-five percent in about seven or eight years. So our values only went thirty-five percent, but our premium to cover that's up three hundred percent. So that is huge.
Wish I had a better news for you. It's not funny, I'm due to this.
Thank you. Move to approve the.
Wait a second.
Yeah.
Nine sixteen. I move to approve the property liability and workers' compensation, comp insurance renewal for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year to EMC for three twenty-nine, five twenty-eight.
Moved and approved, or moved in second, to approve the property liability and workman, and workman's comp insurance renewal, twenty-four, twenty-five school year, to EMC for three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight, before the discussion.
Bud?
Yes.
Apple?
Yes.
Bose? Is he still here?
Yeah.
Okay. Smith?
Yes.
And Tisdale?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brock. Appreciate all you do.
Okay, five point two.
All right, this shouldn't take long. It's only updates to two current ones, so, um, DP, uh, policy is on, uh, collections, and, and Jenny has worked a lot, uh, uh, on that, and so actually, um, this, there was a couple of different options we could choose, and so, um, Jimmy and, and Katie, uh, but maybe Jenny kind of went through, uh, and provided so when we are looking to recover some of our unpaid debt in food service, um, obviously that is a necessity, but I think we've written a policy that provides a lot of grace, a lot of time, work with families, you know, they have all the year to pay those, um, type things. So that's what's outlined in policy DP. And then policy JBCC, so you've already approved, it's all the non-residents. But the legislators, uh, they recessed, and then they went back into session. And when they went back into session in late May, they changed some things in policy JBCC. And so the highlights, actually, if you could go.
I'm trying to find, it didn't, I started over this one.
Okay. I can just tell them, I mean, it was in the cliff notes here. So, um, changes to the timeline to the application process, allows districts to deny applications of students that deem not in good standing to grants an appeal right to them. Grandfathers in certain classifications of non-resident students, attempts to clarify transportation requirements, clarifies the policy would not apply to virtual schools. There's minor terminology adjustment to transportation and student count language, ends the definition of non-resident student. So it really, um, there's no adverse changes in it to us. We've, as we talked before, always been an, an accepting out-of-district students. It actually, I think, the biggest benefit, it allows a little more teeth for us to deny students that our principals deny are in good standing. And so, um, we are already getting some applications, um, um, because the original deadline said that these policies had to be out there. This has to, uh, this was supposed to be out there by June first, uh, but, uh, obviously, it's our first board meeting after the legislators, uh, recess, but it's SB three eighty-seven, so you guys already did everything based off what we thought legislation was. But when they went back in May after the recess, they made some changes to this. So then our attorneys got together and, and changed that, so that's what that was. So whether this one or anything else, you can direct the DP ones to Jenny. But, uh, that's what those two are.
I move to approve the policy updates for policy DP and JBCC as presented.
Second.
The move, move in second and to approve the policy updates for policy DP and JBCC as presented, with the discussion.
Bud?
Yes.
Apple?
Yes.
Bose?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Student Bill?
Yes.
And Tisdale?
Yes.
Goodman? Motion passed.
Yeah. Anytime we get there, even quicker, nine twenty-one now.
Yeah, obviously. I move, we go into executive session with the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and Dr. Van Reen to discuss confidential, confidential student information presented to the exception relating to actions aversely, adversely or favorably affecting a student under coma. And the open meeting will resume in the boardroom at nine thirty.
Say.
As I say, do, do we need to have Michael?
You want Mr. Pickman to? Now I'm in that motion.
I will amend this, this motion to include the assistant principal, Michael Pickman, too.
Say.
It's been, it's been moved and seconded in.